The manager has a couple of issues, or not issues, but presentations.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I want to bring to your attention that in less than a year, with your approval, we were able to partner with the United States Navy at Fort Story to co-locate a Virginia Beach fire engine company to help our coverage and reduce response times and to provide reassurances to the North End and the Shore Drive community that assets have been deployed to assist them and respond to their calls for service. And I want to thank the mayor for coming out and giving a nice speech and also to acknowledge Captain Joey Francine, the commander of Little Creek, Fort Story, for his dedication and showing leadership. And to our knowledge, this is in the mid-Atlantic region, if not the entire United States Navy, the first ever jointly stationed fire station between the United States Navy and a local jurisdiction. And they provided us this plaque, and I'll pass it around so that you can see the two engine companies that will share the same facility. I'd also like to show you this number, to show you the contributions by your employees here in the city of Virginia Beach. And when you couple this with the over $300,000 that our school system provided to United Way, the governments of Virginia Beach, the components of the government of Virginia Beach provided over half a million dollars to the United Way Fund Drive. So a plaque will be forthcoming from them and a presentation to the formal session of city council in the future. Thank you very much.
Well, congratulations to you and your staff for the fine work they've done in that regard. All right. The first thing on the agenda today is the short-term rental discussion. And we received the survey information, and it was, I guess, the best way to put it is, I'm not sure, it was conclusive. And...
You're surprised? I'm not quite sure.
But the... So what I would like for us to do, if we could, is to try to make it conclusive and go through the different points and see if we can come up with a majority of people on the different, council members on the different points to where the city attorney can then draw up an ordinance that meets at least a good majority of the council's wishes in this regard. Mr. Stiles, do you have any comments to make at this point?
Yeah, just a couple, Your Honor. Thank you. Just to remind us where we've been, you know, my office with, in conjunction with the planning director and the zoning administrator had originally prepared three alternative ordinances that this body referred to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission considered, and they referred back a fourth ordinance. Then, when we came back to discuss those four alternatives, it was apparent that there was no consensus on this body as to any of those four alternatives, and so some additional alternatives were prepared. For example, we have, and they're before you, in your packets before you, we have alternatives that were prepared with the input from Mayor Jones and former Mayor Sessoms, and then another alternative ordinance that was prepared at the request of Mr. Moss. During my absence, you had another meeting to discuss the issue, and my understanding is that you instructed staff to prepare a questionnaire, and we prepared that questionnaire, and we got back, I think, a number of responses. But what I have seen, and what I have, I think I mentioned this to the mayor earlier today, what we see here with this short-term rental situation is that it's kind of like the budget. There are a number of individual elements, and there are a number of related elements that are interdependent upon one another. And within that, there are certain of those items that are of great importance to one or more council members, and other items are of lesser importance to one or more council members. And so it's almost as if you need to do some sort of reconciliation of this issue, just like you do a reconciliation on your budget. Because, you know, despite this body's best efforts, despite the Planning Commission's best efforts, despite the best efforts of two council-appointed bodies, and despite the best efforts of your staff, if you told me today to write an ordinance that would get the support of six members of this body, I would tell you I'm not convinced I can do that. So Kay, we've put up here, based on the points of information that I just identified, we've put up here the things that have gotten at least four affirmative responses from all of you, and those that received less than four. I don't know if you want to work from those screens, or if you just want to go through the questionnaire and talk the issues out, but as you'll see, there's still a lot of issues that don't have six or more affirmative responses.
Yes.
How many responses did you get total?
We got five responses that check boxes. Some are all of the boxes on the questionnaire. We got two responses that were in letter or paragraph form, and we were also informed by the information that, for example, Mr. Jones's position is set forth in the ordinance that we drafted for him. And so we've tried to include all of that information in these summary pages. And with that, would you like me to turn it over to Kay, or would you like to just take over?
Kay.
Okay. Yes, sir. First, we have the elements for which there are four or more positive responses. And I think it'd be pretty good to say that home sharing permitted throughout the city. There was really not any dissension about that. We'll allow home sharing throughout the city as long as you register with the commissioner and you pay your taxes. So that seems to be something that we're pretty set on.
Kay, let's get back to what Jim just said. So Mark said you tried to encapsulate that from everybody that submitted, whether they did it in the form that was given or others.
Yes, sir.
But you only have six of the 10 of us that said that that was okay?
Yes, sir.
So there were four that...
There were no responses that were negative. There were not, all of them did not have responses to this question. And some people filled out partially, and so really it's hard to say there are this many answers.
So we didn't follow directions, is what you're saying?
I didn't want to say that.
No, that's not, I wouldn't say that. I would say that, like I said, there are several of these questions that then have a dependent clause attached to them. And so people would say yes, but, or yes, comment. And so we're just telling you the answers that we can, with confidence, tell you we got a yes on.
So if I said, I didn't, but if in mind I said yes, but on that, then the number would have been seven if not for the but, but now it's six?
Yes, if you had said something that made me, it made me think that no, you didn't want home sharing in some manner, or it was so restrictive that it might be a no. So a lot of this is the interpretation of what was said. Not that we tried in any way to put words in your mouth, but sometimes you've got to decide yes or no.
I'm just trying to get some clarity as to how statistically relevant any of this data is.
Well, I'm not, I think what I was trying to inartfully suggest is I'm not sure how, for some of these, for home sharing, I have no doubt that if, that we would get a 9-0, or 9-1, or a 10-0 vote on home sharing as permitted use with regulation provided you pay your taxes.
All right, I understand now. Thank you.
We also had a positive response for short-term rental overlays or permitted use in the overlay districts. So it's permitted in the overlays, or if you go and get a CUP. So if you're not on an overlay, you have to go get a conditional use permit. All of the five areas, three of which we've identified as overlays, and two of which are extensions of the Oceanfront Resource District or the North End Overlay, all five of those had enough support to say that it fits in this category, okay? Sandbridge, of course, is not something we have any control over really anymore with the legislature. The others were either four or five responses. We did not get any response over six.
Barb, Mrs. Henley has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
A question of overlay, and even with these, I still feel that we need to hear from the community, from the people, not just, well, we think it's okay. But I mean, are we saying that we want these to go through the process of polling the property owners and saying, yes, they want to be in an overlay before we do it? Or are we assuming that we just think it's okay, and so we're just willing to go ahead and do it?
I think what I have been hearing kind of constantly is that we want to go and have conversation with each of the overlays, not particularly that we're going to make them go through the process of the 60% or whatever we come up with here, but that we do want to go and have conversation with each neighborhood.
I want them to go through the process. So if you want to know where I am.
What does that mean, Barbara?
That we, you know, we just send a letter to each of the property owners and say we're, you know, it's sort of like we do with the SSD, that same thing, you know, because I think isn't the reason that we're saying this has to go to the Planning Commission, that we are doing a substantial land use zoning change to these areas, and therefore they need to have some input. So, I mean, I don't want to just think that I heard that they say this is what they want. I want to know that this is what they want.
Yes, Barb.
Mrs. Henley, we've talked about that within our office a great deal, and Becky is prepared to address it better than I, but there are, you know, I agree that there needs to be some sort of outreach and communication with the communities. We see significant practical problems with setting a threshold, because we've had that problem with the SSDs, and Becky, I think, can explain the distinction if that's okay.
So we have done the petition process with the SSDs where everybody has to submit, we have to have 80% positive responses, but the set of people that you were talking about in each SSD is so much smaller than what you would be talking about in the overlays. But even with that, we have a number of issues. For example, you have a number of homeowners in one home. Sometimes you have, usually you have two people on the deed, each of whom having their own opinion about it. So they don't always agree internally. Sometimes you have multiple owners in an LLC, especially with investment properties. So we would have one vote for that corporate owner, but we would have to also verify with the SEC that we have the right body making that vote. Also, what complicates it is if you don't have a set timing, sometimes you might get a yes from one property, but by the time you finish the petition process, that property has now sold, and the new owner is a no, and you can't bind the new owner with the original vote. So you have, you know, transfer of property is an issue, and we would have to verify from a title perspective, all of the owners who are voting, to make sure that they're right. So it would be a very intense and complicated process that, I have to say, we may not get right based on all of the failures of those. So if we do the petition process, it would have to be in relatively small groups, I would say, which would be hard to do. You might have smaller overlays. And it would have to have a very set time period that would be relatively short, and you may want to think about silence being a vote one way or the other. But if silence is a no, then I do feel like it would be very difficult to achieve any positive response on that. So I just wanted to make sure you understood all those practical problems, and we can think about other ways to do it, maybe with public meetings and, you know, having proof of their ownership if they come to the meeting, and having a vote taken at the meeting, or something like that. There may be other ways to do it, but I think that that similar petition process with the SSD would be virtually unworkable from a practical standpoint.
We end up, a lot of times, removing properties, removing hold codes from the SSD just because we didn't hear back from people.
John.
Well, I think Barb makes a good point. You can, bias should be to the status quo. What we're really saying is we aren't willing, we're trying to make it easy to change the status quo rather than giving the status quo the presumption of being correct. And generally speaking, that's not how precedent works in law, if I'm pretty correct, and it's not how it does in forensics debate either. The status quo was presumed to be correct and have an advantage until something's proven otherwise. I think that's a fairly, fairly good statement. So it should be, if there's a bias, the bias should be to enabling the preservation of the status quo rather than creating, removing barriers that makes it easier to change. So there may be some practical things that don't work. We're going to look at those, but there ought to be practical ways to resolve that. If people can't agree, then they can't vote. Okay, so they can't agree, they don't get the vote, they can't exercise their rights, but it's like, you know, there's only two senators for every state, you know? That's how it kind of works. There's a constitutional convention, there's only one vote for every state, and a bunch of people have to agree before you can cast a ballot. So those aren't unusual arrangements in governance in the contemporary, modern world. So there's a way to overcome those, but it's borne by the people who want to change. And so if the current zoning where people live is R-10 or all these things where it says unless it's longer than 30 days, you can't, under 30 days you can't rent, has to be more than 30 days, well, that's the status quo. So if you're wanting to change that, now, I realize that some of the districts where it's different, but where that is the case, like Bay Lake Pines, then those people shouldn't be having to bear the burden of enabling that status quo to be changed. I mean, if it's hard, it's hard. It ought to be realistically doable, and that ought to be what we do. If we have neighborhoods where, that are like Sandbridge, where it's been the tradition of renting and all these other kind of things, and you draw those barriers the right way, maybe there are cases that are like Sandbridge that need to be recognized for the vested interest that's always been there. But narrow, but I don't think anyone would say that that's, it's hard to draw a subdivision line for Bay Lake Pines, or that it's hard for the owners that own a home in Bay Lake Pines that the owners to know whether or not they want their subdivision to have short-term rentals. So I just think there's workaround for some of this, Mr. ... I just think that we need to be careful not to think, oh, because all those things sound so onerous that we shouldn't do, shouldn't have overlay districts. That's all I'm saying.
Well, in response to what you're saying, and to a certain extent, I'm agreeing with you, John. For instance, Ocean Park, I received a letter from the Civic League at Ocean Park requesting that they have an overlay district for short-term rentals. I also received a letter from Chick's Beach Civic League requesting that they not have short-term rentals. So that's the basis of why I put overlay district for Ocean Park. Now, I think, Jim, you've had some kind of response from the Civic League at Cape Story, if I'm not a Cape Henry...
Yeah, I've had a couple from the, not formally from the Civic Leagues, I have to think back on that, but I know North Beach has had a formal position on it.
Right, I got a letter from North Beach on it, so. And now, did you get a letter or anything, or?
On the, from North Beach?
Yeah.
The other two?
No.
Yeah, I've gotten communications from both of those other two, and they're also wanting the overlay. I'm just trying to remember if it was in a letter form or email or something like that.
Yes.
And I was contacted, too.
Because it's been going on a little while.
Lakewood, Pinewood, and Old Beach want to be in an overlay district. And that's from the president of the Resort Beach Civic League, Brad Capps.
Did...
I do.
You say you got a letter from Old Beach?
Yeah, email.
Yeah, email.
From the Civic League president.
Yes, Barb.
But we all know that Civic Leagues usually are a small percentage of the people in a neighborhood. I mean, that is just the way it is everywhere, I think. And I would think if we're going to say there's going to be an organization that's going to do this, then we have to, I mean, everybody has to be aware that that's what we're going to accept. So, I mean, I think we have to know, okay, how many people were at your meeting, and when they took this position, or, you know, what percentage is, because I'm leery of going in that direction.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Well, let me talk a little bit about process for the creation of overlays. The process for the creation of an overlay requires mailed notice to every property owner in that proposed overlay, so they all have notice. But I guess, and I'm not in any way arguing with the points that have been made here, I think they're all very good points. I think what we're, what we are telling you from our experience with the SSD is you may have a letter from the Civic League, and the Civic League may, in the case of this neighborhood, actually represent a majority of the homeowners, property owners within that, but the principle of apathy sets in, and people just don't respond. And so you may have a community that really wants one, but because unless you determine how you're going to treat those no responses, how you treat those no responses strongly impacts whether or not the desire of the community comes forward. And the other thing that I would say is, the SSD petition requirement is driven in part by the state law because it involves taxation. We, as a city, and I'm not aware of any other local governments that have ever tied a zoning decision to a percentage of the population within an area as to what they approve or don't approve. And so, just so that you know, you're creating another legal hurdle, and you are creating another opportunity for whoever's on the losing side of that battle to challenge your action. So I'm not telling you to do it or not to do it, I'm just raising things for you all to individually consider.
Yes, John.
One of the things I try to, because I try to look at this as the reasonable person rule, you know? Sandbridge made a lot of sense. I know some people don't think it made a lot of sense, but there was an established thing, what went on, going on a long time. I've lived the beach all my life, in the county days, they were renting houses, little beach cottages at the time, over in Croatan, the school teachers back then, doing probably not two weeks, they didn't have this enabling technology, but rentals were taking place, and there are established things that took place. I don't know how many places are really like that, and those are, and so, but what I do know is that it wasn't the case in Fairfield, it wasn't the case in College Park, it wasn't the case in Greenmount. So there's a lot of the city. So when we're looking at this issue, I know we tend to focus on how to resolve where it has been an established practice and an expectation of property owners, and that is probably 10% of the land area of the city, maybe even less, but there's still the 90% where the contagion hasn't, if some people look at it that way, hasn't spread such that you don't have the ability to say it's not the standard accepted practice. And is there, and is there a consensus? I'm trying to figure out how to focus down, Mr. Mayor, on what's the problem we're trying to solve. Is everybody in a, not saying, is the majority in agreement that in these R-10, R-40, R-30, R-20, these neighborhoods where it hasn't been this long-established practice, that we don't want it to become the long-established practice, but people who already have their license are grandfathered, and that takes like 90, 90 things off the table, and now we come back to how we deal with the niches, you know? And then we can, that's a different type of discussion, so you can engage in a better way and get a better feel. I'd like to know what we can take off the table so we know what's on it, and where we're in agreement substantially, so we can narrow down, how do you solve Croatan, or what part of Old Beach, you know, or, it's got different places there, as you well know, you know probably better than I from people around this table, but a North Beach wants one week, so you don't have to have uniform regulations. Other parts want two weeks. I think we just have to not have, the overlay districts don't have to be one size fits all, or one regulation fits all, is what I'm trying to say. But can we agree that where it isn't the norm, that we can deal with that and get that off the table as a position and focus on where the friction is?
And on that point...
On the issue of different regulations in different districts, this council would need to make factual findings as to why the two are different, otherwise, and it would be, it wouldn't be a short-term overlay district, it would be the, this neighborhood district and this neighborhood district would have this regulation, which just so happened to allow STRs, because I don't think you can have just a general STR overlay that's here, 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 and here, and have different regulations, because you'll violate the uniformity principle there.
But if we do, as you suggested, but have a basis in fact dealing with what has been historical practice and all the behavior, I'm trying to look the reasonable, once again, the reasonable piece. Not everyone would agree, but the 80% would say, you know, that does make sense. You know, they might not be on the winning side of where the lines drawn, but it does appear to be the practical answer. But I get your point, though.
Kay, you want to go on?
Yes, these are the other things that are, have four or more positive responses. If you look at these, a lot of these are the conditions that we would have. We would have the posting the summary, the trash, the million dollars in insurance, we'll do that better up, I'm just giving you some context thus. Contact persons required within 30 minutes, a special event permit for any group that's 50 or over with 100 maximum, three a year, register and pay taxes, have a fire extinguishers, and also carbon monoxide detectors if required. Maximum occupancy would be three per bedroom plus two, a four-square-foot sign, no amplified sound after 10:00 PM or before 10:00 AM, and they would grandfather those short-term rentals that have been established and have paid their taxes and registered. The question here becomes, there's not a four or more consensus for what the date would be. Would it be 1-118, or would it be the date of adoption? There's some flux there, there is no set date, nor is there any consensus about how much you would allow them to expand the grandfathered provision.
And as Mr. Moss pointed out, the decision on grandfathering, that's one of those ones that's interrelated to a bunch of other issues. I have, in the information we got, for example, I had, that is a deal killer for me both ways, from at least one member of this body. So that's, that's, that's one of those that you really do need to know where six of you stand on that issue, because that then does inform some of these other questions. So that was not, that was one of the, that was in one of the alternatives that we sent back to the Planning Commission. It was not recommended back from the Planning Commission, because they didn't recommend, of course, CUPs at all, and it wasn't part of the Planning Commission's recommendation. It was not part of either Mr. Jones's or Mr. Moss's alternatives. But it did get support in the questionnaire. So that is one that I would ask you to sort of talk about and see where you are, so we know what to do there.
Yes, Mr. Wood.
If we're still talking about conditions, I just, the no amplified sound, and I said no, because I'm trying to wrap my arms around that. Should there be amplified sound outside any time?
Well, that would say, I can't put a radio on the beach.
Well, it's on the beach, that's a little different.
Well, you can have a radio by the pool.
By the pool? I mean, I wouldn't be able to put any kind of sound like that out.
See, what we have in our noise ordinance now doesn't prohibit amplified sound itself, it only prohibits amplified sound over a certain decibel level when measured from a property line, and the decibel level changes from day and night. And it's, based on comments from a number of members of the body, we said, we just want a straight yes-no that we can enforce or not enforce. And so that was the reason that it was written that way, no amplified sound after 10, thinking that that would give some, you know, a neighbor might have to deal with it after his kid went to bed at 8 o'clock, but he would know, or she would know, that it was going to end at 10.
Okay. Go ahead, Kay.
Okay, parking, there was a consensus here for parking, single-family, one space per bedroom, and multifamily, two spaces per dwelling. So all multifamily, each unit would have two. Single-family would depend on how many bedrooms they had. And there was four positive responses for two rental contracts per seven days, not making the distinction between single-family and multifamily.
Jessica has a question.
I have, well, really a comment about the parking. So I might be in the unique position of, I live next door to a short-term rental in Councilville, believe it or not, and the parking is the stress on my... Kansasville, believe it or not, and the parking is the stress on my neighborhood, because they are very nice people, I can tell you without a doubt, I've had a very positive experience with that short-term rental. Sometimes, we get a family who rolls up, and it's a four-bedroom house, and they've got 10 cars, and I'm not kidding, because this happened last week. So, my concern with the parking is that it's not per bedroom, but rather maybe a square footage guideline, so that we're not, you know, I mean, the houses in my neighborhood are small, they're not, just because the house next door to me has four bedrooms, they're four small bedrooms, because my house is 1,600 square feet, so, you know, and I can park maybe two cars in my driveway, and the neighbor could, in his driveway, he's got like a little by lot, he might be able to put three and not impact the cul-de-sac. So, I really, I feel like the guideline shouldn't be per bedroom, it should be square footage of house, or square footage of bedrooms, or I, I just, I don't know. I'm very pro-short-term rental, and, and being that I live next door to one, I don't know if it's on the books or not, but, you know, and I've had a positive experience with it, that's just, that is the thing that I hear my neighbors gripe about, is when the cars fill up the cul-de-sac.
Well, and it's, it's one of the concerns that we've heard repeatedly from communities who deal with this issue, and it's an enforcement problem, too, because as I think I said it the last time I was with you all, when we discussed all this, those cars in your neighborhood are probably all lawfully parked.
They are.
You can't call the police and have the police come down and fix the issue, because they're all lawfully parked, it's just an annoyance to the rest of the community, because they now have no place to park. So, there does need to be a plan that takes into account parking.
Or even maybe the square footage of the onsite parking. I, you know, I understand that won't work at the oceanfront, because there's basically no onsite parking down there, but, you know, I mean, in my neighborhood, we can figure that out for sure, but I don't know, that, I don't know if I agree, I don't really agree with the parking part of that, that was what I had sent back in a paragraph.
Well, it just seems to me that the basic question that we first have to deal with here is, do we want a short-term rental ordinance? And once we decide whether we do or we don't, then we can decide, start deciding what's going to be in it. But unless we are certain that we, that a majority of the council wants a short-term rental ordinance, we're just, you know, treading water here. So, I'd like to go around the table and find out whether a majority of this council thinks we need a short-term rental ordinance.
What, just for discussion's sake, so what, what are the repercussions if we do have one, and what are the repercussions if we don't have one?
Well, if you.
I have a feeling we know what's happening since we don't have one, but.
If you, if you do have one, you're going to have some people who are going to be very happy that you do, and you're going to have some people who aren't. And it's just, it's exactly the same the other way around. So, yes, John?
I'd like to ask the lawyer a question. Since we have a zoning ordinance, the city attorney, a zoning ordinance that says rentals and access of 30 days are not allowed in, say, R-10. So, let's just say there's a bona fide documented verified short-term rental taking place on R-10, and we're doing nothing. Cannot the residents who live near that, because that's a non-discretionary act, go to the circuit court and get a writ of mandamus directing the city to enforce the city ordinance, since it's non-discretionary?
I think enforcement action is generally viewed as discretionary by the courts, but there is an argument. Now, now, to answer, to answer the two questions more broadly, and I think I have said this before, I think that now that this issue has come to the forefront, your staff would tell you that if, having considered it, you elect not to allow short-term rentals in some form, that the staff is going to feel it's incumbent upon them to begin enforcement. The other thing I've got to say to you, though, is our ability to enforce our own zoning ordinance in Sandbridge has now been taken away by the General Assembly, so we would be enforcing presumably everywhere else but in Sandbridge. And if you, and, and, you know, you could theoretically, you could say, I don't want a short-term rental ordinance, but I will do a, no, a home share ordinance, and I'll allow the home shares, but I'm not ready to take action on the short-term rentals yet. If you did that, then again, I still think that, you know, our enforcement effort there would be a lot lesser, because how do we know whether the owner is, is there during the rental or not? That would create an enforcement prob, I don't want to speak for zoning and planning, but I think that would create another enforcement issue for, for staff. And Barry, I really shouldn't be speaking for your departments.
You are absolutely correct. That you shouldn't be speaking for your department.
No, no.
Well, let me just.
She wouldn't have the 3-1-1 to call, right?
Anytime we would have to go onto property, and, well, in fact, we can't, we couldn't enter a house and check if the owner was there, so we can't do that. Correct? Correct. So, it would be very difficult. I agree with you, you are absolutely correct, it'd be very difficult to enforce those types of ordinances.
Yes, yes.
Just to be clear.
I have kind of a technical question, I don't know if the answer exists. From when we enacted the registration to today, or whatever day you want to put on it, have we seen the number of registered short-term rentals? I guess we can't say that, because obviously we had a, when did we, when did we start registering short-term rentals?
Almost two years ago, I believe.
So, let's just say in the last year, have we seen a exorbitant amount of growth in how many short-term rentals are being registered?
I think Phil, I think the commissioner would have to address that. My sense of it is that, is yes.
Okay.
But, but I haven't looked at that data.
Because I just wonder if maybe we've already hit the peak of how many rentals are going to be registered.
Well, and the other side of that is also, the commissioner has a paid consultant now, who is helping them identify short-term rentals, and then going out to them and getting, you know, getting them registered. So, there ha, I would, I would, Ms. Abbott, I would say that definitely there has been a significant increase in the number of registrations over the last years, but for a couple of different reasons.
Right, but we can't measure how many were already operating versus how many were registering, and then from that set, that data set, how many of those are new, because people said, oh, I'm going to start renting my house short-term, which, I mean, there is a trend, because people, I mean, I get that call every day, well, not every day in my office, but I get it at least once a week, saying, I want to do that, what does my insurance cover? But I, I just, we have a fixed amount of property that are going to be able to do that anyway, and, I mean, have we exceeded, are we, you know, I just, I'm just curious as to what our capacity is from a theoretical level, and how close we are to hitting that.
And I'm sorry, but that's a question I can't.
I'll take another pass, try to get the commissioner to respond.
Kay, do you want to go on?
Yes, so these are the, the elements, there were three or fewer positive responses for these, so this is, is really all over the place, and lots of people didn't answer some of these questions. On the date for grandfathering, what date should be used? Yes, we want a grandfather, but we don't have a date, we don't have alterations, we don't have how we, some of the ways we would create new overlays, maximal occupancy, there was a little bit of dissension there, the rental contracts, you probably put this in the city zoning ordinance, as it probably should be, city code got one, some of these with the asterisks are the alternatives.
Hey, can you back up to that one?
Yes, sir.
See, that's, that's where I have a problem with some of this, Mr. Mayor, is.
All right, can't hear you.
That's why I have a problem with some of this, is, is creating expectations of what our enforceability is. And I think everybody around here agrees that the, the basic rules of governance for these is important. But the enforceability of that, as we know, is not, is far from instantaneous. And so, when there is a problem, even if it's someone who's flagrantly disregarding whatever the reasonable set of rules are that's agreed on this council, the opportunity to give a neighbor relief against that is, is pretty limited. So, just that is the backdrop. So, my question is, in terms of locating it as, in the city ordinance, or in the, in the city code, or zoning ordinance, Mark, which gives us the faster relief against somebody who does not comply? Are they the same? Are they both just as equally terrible?
Well, they're, they're different. The, the timing would be quicker outside the zoning ordinance. But then you're making, but then you're asking the police department to enforce the civil law, and, and they're, I'm not sure how that works either. So, so, you know, if you ask me, should this, if you ask me, should this be in the zoning ordinance, or elsewhere in the code as a legal matter, I would say, I understand why you, you don't want it to be in the zoning ordinance, but I would tell you that it fits most cleanly in the zoning ordinance, even though there are difficulties in enforcing it. I mean, I.
I'm sorry.
You know, one softball would have been nice, I mean.
Well, I'm still waiting for it.
Thank you.
The registering?
Yes, John.
Register.
Back to the mayor's initial point, which I think is, before we get to here, the point was right, you know, we can stay with the status quo, and where the code doesn't, doesn't matter what the regulations are, if the code doesn't, zoning currently doesn't allow for it, the city just has to figure out if they can establish that, that's not easy, but it's binary, you're either doing it or you're not, and then you can enforce it, because it's not about how many warnings you got, or how many this or that, because it's just not allowed. If we do nothing, that's what I heard him say, and if we do something, then every place where we do it, this is why I wrote my letter, I wrote back, is it's really hard to judge where to allow it, until you first see, not just what the thing you would enforce is, but show me the enforcement mechanism, because if the enforcement mechanism isn't realistic and doesn't deliver the outcome, then you strike it off the list, because it's, why are you going to put that burden on the staff? So, are we really going to go in and check their house for fire extinguishers? Probably not. Okay, now, will their insurance company be interested in that? Whether they cover it or not, if they don't have it in mind? Yes, they will. So, okay, we don't have to worry about it, because they're taking on liability, if they don't want to own their beach house, they're going to give it to the insurance company, that's fine with me. So, you take that off. So, you start walking down this list about what's really enforceable, and you tell the public, you know, if you want this in your neighborhood, whatever that is, just be aware, these are the four things we can do, and here's the timeline each one of those takes. And I think that's being frank with people, I think that's being candid, you're setting a reasonable expectation on us, on the staff, and the thing that isn't reasonable, you just leave it off and say, because I'm giving you a false promise. So, I think it comes back to my original point of, is where do we, is there an agreement upon where we don't want to have, like, we want to do home share, we all think, I'm certainly, I think all of us, the home share, we're all in favor of that, so we could move forward with that, I think. I think, I don't know if a majority of us think that we don't want to have, and we don't want to allow it in Bay Lake Pines, and are these R-10s where it's not established practice, is that kind of the belief in Fairfield, if we think that's right? Okay, that's another thing that's off the plate, we can kind of codify where we're not going to do it. And now, what's the answer for Croatan? You know, what does, what does John think about Croatan, or what does Louis think about? You know, you are, represent your place, I think you should be going out there engaging, I know you are, engaging your folks to see just what that is. And I think that's the value you bring to the table, because you're closest to those constituents, and let's see, see what they think when they realize what we can really do. These are the things that, because we've got a mechanism, we're not just giving the planning commission an idea, we're telling the planning commission, this is what the city staff says, it's reasonable to expect someone to do, and the timeline that would take. And we heard once, it was like, I think it was two years to do something, I think, if I remember right, between you went through all the steps and all the notifications, it was two years. I think that's pretty close. And I think we just ought to tell them that, and then see what the appetite is from the public when they're really informed about, and they might say, you know, I prefer the wild, wild west, you know, to, and don't do anything. That might be their answer, I'm not saying that it would be, but, but I'm certainly have told you before, I just think that we ought to protect the neighborhoods, like Bay Lake Pines, or where it's Fairfield, or College Park, or Green Run, where it hasn't been an established practice, grandfathering, wherever that is, for the people who've already got their thing. And now we just got to figure out what to do at North Beach, not that that's easy, at Old Beach, and Croatan. I think this is, let's take the pieces off the table, so we know what's, what cake is still left. And I think we can be much more focused, because the planning commission's going to get better direction from us about what we're willing to support. So, I'd like to know how many people on the table think that we should have, it's citywide as an entitlement, which was a planning commission thing, I don't think anyone was, I don't know who was saying that, but if that's off the table, that is everywhere, then I think we're back to what I just suggested. You know, let's focus on where the problem is.
I'm going to go around the table and ask, do you want our ordinance? That's the first thing I'll.
I do that.
Jessica?
I don't really honestly know how to answer that question, because I don't really agree with anything that's been put forward. That's not to say I won't, but as it stands now, I think I'm going to say no.
Kay, Ben?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
No.
Bob, no? Barbara?
Well, we've got them, and they're problematic, so I don't think we can ignore it, so I think we probably do need an ordinance of some, some kind.
All right, I think we do. Jim?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dan? What did you say?
Yes, I, I, unfortunately, I think we do.
That is, that is unfortunate.
Okay, so we need an ordinance. So, the next question is, what do we want in it? And we've got a list of things here that, that have been sent out to you. Yes, did you have a comment, Mark?
Well, I guess the, the next question that, that Mr. Moss asked might be the next question. Do you want to, are you, is, is there a majority that's comfortable with the planning commission's recommendation that they be allowed throughout the city? You can take that off the table quickly, I think.
All right, let's, let's find out.
Let's define that.
Define that, right?
By right everywhere.
They were going to be, they were by right everywhere.
By right everywhere, they did have conditions attached to them, pretty much in the genre of those that you've done, but.
I'll start on the other side. Shannon?
I think if I own a property and I want to do it, and someone else can do it, then yes, I think so.
Yeah, I'm going to mess up your whole tally, because I'm going to tell you that no, I don't think it should be around by right everywhere else, but I have a big problem with taking away the right that someone has already had. I mean, I've talked, I've talked to a whole bunch of people that are not big investors that have, but have invested, because we've allowed this use that they've counted on. So, I, so, no, I don't think it should be allowed throughout the city without.
We'll get to the details later on.
Okay, well, what, then you put me down as a yes or a no?
Put you down as a no.
Definitely tenor.
I put you down as a no.
There's got to be stipulations, we can't just have a.
Well, let's first ask the grandfather question first.
Well, do the grandfather question first.
That's a good question.
Well, if you allow them everywhere, you don't have to worry about grandfathering.
But that's what makes the next question work.
Are we not, are we not, isn't allowing them everywhere, it could be in the form of a CUP, it could be, well, if you're doing it, if you're doing it already, are you grandfathered in? Yes or no?
That's the next question.
Well, let's do that question now.
Okay, Mr.?
All right.
Mayor?
What's the question? Grandfathering.
Are we going to, let's do the grandfathering question first.
Beg pardon?
Let's do the grandfathering question first, rather than.
You want to do the grand, all right.
Right, my answer, so yes, if they're grandfathered, then yes, they should continue to do this, in my opinion.
Okay, so we're asking the grandfathering question now?
Yes.
And Ms. King said yes.
Okay, we're asking the grandfathering question.
How do we define what grandfathering is?
I don't think we have to specify the date yet.
Your kids have kids.
Beg pardon?
I'm just saying, if you're doing them.
You're one.
If they're doing them now, they can keep doing them. That's all I want to grandfather.
If you're doing it, you can continue doing it.
Well, let's say if you're doing it and you're registered by, by whatever date you agree, that you can do it, and then we'll pick a date later.
All right.
Meaning you're paying your taxes, and you're registered.
All right, starting again.
May I ask a question?
Yes, please.
All right, but, for example, I keep getting these emails and so forth of this one that's occurring in Latimer, that is just really problematic, and it's, I mean, grandfather something that's being just absolutely a problem, I mean, so are there qualifications?
And plus this one in Bay Lake, or Bayville, that'd be your.
Qualifications of when it's grandfathered and when it's not, I mean, those folks who are in history.
I think you have, I don't think, and then you got to use your other mechanisms.
I'm sorry, Mayor, Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Your response, yes. Thank you.
He's so sorry.
Yes.
I'm no.
He's no.
He is one.
Barbara?
It, it just depends on what the regulations are.
See, that's where I am, but-
Well, that's where we go next.
Yeah, but if we're going to make some of these regulations that I'm not in favor of, then I would be for grandfathering it. Okay, I'm still thinking.
What are you?
Maybe.
Don't get him.
Why is there maybe as voucher?
Is that an option?
The yellow button. No, they're definitely tentative.
Really, can I stay?
All right. Bob?
No, I think, I think it should be by right.
Okay.
And everybody should have equal access. People should, it's their property.
Assuming, assuming that there is an ordinance, are you in favor of grandfathering?
I, I tell you, I, I don't think that should be an option. I'm saying that.
Say that again.
No. But, you know, I, I just think that people should have a right to do what they want with their property.
Yes.
If I go down a flare.
Yes. I think I knew where you were.
Yeah, big yes.
Yes, you do.
Big yes. Yep.
Somehow I knew what your answer was going to be. Okay, well, vast majority say yes. So, what was the second question?
Planning commission, whether you all wanted them to be a by right use in the, in all of the city.
Say it again.
To be a, whether you wanted them to be a by right use throughout the city, the planning commission, commission version.
Should we break that out into home sharing and then short-term rentals since we're talking about both or we unilaterally agreed to- I think we've, we've all agreed to home share.
Home share.
Okay. I just wanted it clear.
Is, is short-term rentals by right independent of zoning?
Okay.
Even though we all have, since it's so muddy now to recognize that once we allow the home sharing, the enforceability of the other becomes-
Although there are other communities, it will be difficult, but there are other communities that do exactly that, just allowing home sharing only.
Okay, short-term rentals is by right.
Everywhere.
Everywhere.
With the stipulation.
With rules, right?
With rules.
With some rules, yes. We haven't gotten any rules yet.
So, do we determine what, should we not determine those rules before we figure out? I don't know. I guess we see who's open to by right.
I'd like to change the mind here. We're just trying to get a frame of reference.
With regulations, in other words. Is that right?
And with whatever regulations you subsequently tell us if, if.
All right. Well, we'll start on the other end now.
Yes.
Everywhere by right?
Yes.
With regulation, okay.
Yes.
I think we got to protect the integrity of our neighborhoods. I'm a no.
We're reading a couple of things.
John?
No.
Did he say no?
Who knows? Full moon.
Yes, no, no.
Yes.
Barbara? I'm no. Jim?
No.
No.
John?
No.
Yes, as long as they're following regulations, whatever those might be.
Two, three, six, seven. Seven no's and-
Go to the minority.
Three. Let's see. No, eight no's.
Been there a couple times.
Eight no's and two yeses, so. Eight no's and two yeses.
Sounds like you got six.
No, there were three yeses.
Seven to three.
There were three yeses, I got. Shannon, Bobby and Jessica.
Oh, yeah, okay. Seven, seven no's and three yeses.
So, the obverse of that question is, are they prohibited everywhere except in Sandbridge and as grandfathered? I don't know if you want to ask that question or not, but that's, if we're trying to rule things out.
That's a good, close simulation question.
Say that again. Are they prohibited, other than the overlay and grandfathered?
Other than Sandbridge?
Oh, other than Sandbridge.
As required by state law and as grandfathered, which you've already said, so no new ones anywhere in the city. You don't have to ask that question. I'm just throwing it out there for you to consider.
Read, give it to me, Lloyd. Let's, let's, we're getting somewhere here, so, you know.
Louis is psychic today.
We're, we're getting somewhere here now.
So, they would, so, are you in favor of prohibiting them everywhere except as in Sandbridge, as required by the state, and as grandfathered, as you've already voted?
Why don't you just say, are you in favor of creating other overlay districts besides Sandbridge?
Well, I mean, I think you get to there, but I was just trying to take it step by step, so we incrementally knew where we were getting.
I do like this approach. Might seem redundant, but I think it's clarity is nice.
Yeah, yeah, right. I'm sorry, I just-
Word it for me again. Word it for me again now.
Would you favor prohibiting them everywhere except in Sandbridge, because that's the state law requires it? You don't have that authority. And as grandfathered, which you already said that you wanted to do?
Which in its essence would mean there'd be other ones.
No new ones, no new ones, anyway.
No, no, other than Sandbridge.
No new, no ones anywhere, except Sandbridge.
Permitted everywhere.
Prohibited everywhere.
Prohibited.
Prohibited everywhere except as permitted and grandfathered. Is that correct?
Sandbridge.
Yeah, Sandbridge and grandfathered.
And then the next question after that would be, do you want to do overlays?
Okay, let's do this one first. Permitted everywhere except, prohibited everywhere except Sandbridge and grandfathered. Okay. Shannon?
Start down there, I need to think. Start down there, I need to think.
All right.
Please, Louis.
I'll, I'll start with Jim this time.
No.
Rosemary?
No.
John?
I'm a soft no.
Beg pardon?
Soft no.
I didn't know maybe it's a soft no.
How do I mark that down?
My tally was in the no category.
Soft on the back.
Right, John's in with pencil.
Shannon?
No new ones. We take out Sandbridge, but no new ones unless, except for the grandfathered ones.
Except Sandbridge and grandfathered.
No.
All right, Jessica?
No.
No.
Ben?
No.
John?
No. I just heard you say it, so I thought he asked.
Bob?
No. No, I guess we have to be fair.
At least ask the question that got unanimous support.
I'm no.
That's rare.
Okay.
Soft no counts.
Soft no.
All right. Now, the next issue is the overlays, right?
The next issue is, do you, do you, so, what that tells us is you have said no to prohibit them everywhere and no to permit them everywhere. So, the implication is that you want CUPs.
Or overlay.
Or you want overlays. So, you need to ask those two questions.
Can we just ask?
And you can have both.
We can have both. Or, we can, let's, let's do, let's do the overlays first separately and then we'll do the conditional use permit, okay?
And then we can ask a question of overlays with use permits, because that is a combo. That's a hybrid of the, of the two.
Now, you got to give them out to the ones.
Well, that's what he said, though.
You don't even need an overlay, overlay to come out of these.
Okay, we're going to start with overlays. We're getting somewhere here, folks. Barbara?
I'm, I'm agreeable with overlays, but I don't want just a meeting that has 10 people show up deciding that that's who are going to get it. I want overlay, provided we've got a good process that gives us a good, good indication of what the neighborhood thinks, real indication.
That's kind of-
If they don't show up, maybe they don't care.
That's a strong.
That's very conditional, okay.
Yeah.
Bob?
It's better than a conditional use permit, yeah.
You, you'll go with overlays? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
I have, my issue is that I feel like it's not applying the rules equitably across the city. And being in Kemp's, I think the one brief we got said there's like 300 some in my district, maybe less than that. I might, that number might be totally inaccurate, but I don't like CUPs because I think that that's a really difficult burden as a property owner. And I don't particularly care for the overlay because I don't think it's fair. But I will, I will yield to what the majority likes on that one. That's my answer.
So, that's another maybe?
That's, that's, I will yield to the majority on that.
I'm going to put a question, Mark.
You don't really have a choice.
Shannon?
Okay.
John?
Mine's a yes, but I share Barbara's concern about the mechanism by how we define what
those overlays are.
So, Mark-
I'd like to clarify my yeses on the same.
But, Mark, didn't you say with the overlay it had to, or was that the, um-
Letters are going to be sent out to everyone.
Right, so it's not something, um, by city, it gets done by sending out letters to-
You can do it either way.
You send out the letters for notification, not really for instant-
We have to send letters of notification before the planning commission, so people have the chance to come and make the arguments to you. But just like with granting an individual CUP, it's, it's, unless you create a new requirement, it's ultimately in your discretion whether to create it.
What I would recommend is, we, as we go through this, if that ends up being the central tendency response, we would have some discussion and then another set of questions to eliminate and establish what, so now we, we would just continue the same methodology, which I think is good. Discussion, find out where the central tendency is, then go to the next level of decomposition and have a discussion and find out what the central tendency is.
Okay, if we have, if we have a majority yes on overlays, we'll discuss how we-
Yep.
How we're going to apply it, okay?
But we're not eliminating the possibility for CUPs in the rest of the city.
We've, we've, we've still got to go to-
We haven't decided, we haven't decided that yet.
We haven't decided CUPs, CUPs, yeah. Let's see, we got John last, Rosemary?
A question.
Should we have overlays?
Yes. With so much discussion in between, you kind of lose track.
Always your best.
Jim?
Yes, with the same qualification of Ben, Barbara and John.
All of us.
Uh, yes. So, we, we have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight yeses and, and two, three yeses with, with, we got to talk about how we're going to apply them, so, okay. All right. Now, conditional use permits.
And what we, what I think we mean by that, just so that I can put voice to it, to be helpful, tell me to shut up at any time and I will abide by your instructions.
Oh, you're doing great.
But, but we're saying CUPs in areas that are not subject to an overlay and are not grandfathered already, right?
Say that again.
The CUPs would apply in areas that are not subject to an overlay and, and, and are not already grandfathered, because they wouldn't have to get a CUP.
May I ask a question? At some time in the past when we were discussing this, we, we had some short discussion about whether a conditional use permit for short-term rentals had to be-
It goes with the property and it's a forever thing, or if there was a way to make it a certain length of time.
Conditional use permits traditionally run with the property.
It will run with the property and, and that is something that my law has to do, but you all can set a time limit on the conditional use permit. It'll be for five years or it'll be for, for three years, or it has to come back to you or it can be administratively approved, but it will still run with the land.
So, if the property is sold, then it automatically goes with the land?
Yes, ma'am.
But, okay, but after that time period, then it's forever?
No, you could take a time period and say every five years, this has to be renewed by coming back to city council.
Or it could be administratively renewed and, and you could direct staff that if there had been problems with this particular property, to bring it back to you for approval.
Okay, everybody understand what we're asking? All right.
Yes.
Shannon, yes. John?
Yes.
That sounds so exciting.
Looked like you were paying there, John.
This is the worst of all of them.
Yes.
Rosemary, yes. Jim?
I honestly don't know.
You?
Jim said he honestly didn't know.
I'm yes.
Shannon? It's overlay with CUPs.
The CUPs would apply in areas that are not subject to an overlay and are not already grandfathered, because they wouldn't have to get a CUP.
May I ask a question? At some time in the past when we were discussing this, we had some short discussion about whether a conditional use permit for short-term rentals had to be...
It goes with the property and it's a forever thing, or if there was a way to make it a certain length of time.
Conditional use permits traditionally run with the property.
It will run with the property, and that is something that my law has to do, but you all can set a time limit on the conditional use permit. It'll be for five years, or it'll be for three years, or it has to come back to you, or it can be administratively approved, but it will still run with the land.
So if the property is sold, then it automatically goes with the land?
Yes, ma'am.
But, okay, but after that time period, then it's forever?
No, you could take a time period and say every five years, this has to be renewed by coming back to City Council.
Well, it could be administratively renewed and you could direct staff that if there had been problems with this particular property, to bring it back to you for approval.
Okay, everybody understand what we're asking? All right?
Yes.
Shannon, yes? John?
Yes.
That sounds so exciting.
Looks like you were paying there, John.
This is the worst of all of them.
Rosemary, yes? Jim?
I honestly don't know.
You?
Jim said he honestly didn't know.
I'm yes.
Barbara? I'm yes, but I would like to see us make a time limit with all of them, just as a standard thing.
Okay.
No, I think time limit's a good idea.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
I agree with that, yeah. Bob? John?
Before, once you go down this road, a conditional use permit is in effect a sweeping precedent setting by right, because you can never justify saying no. So my vote is no.
Ben?
Yes, with the stipulation for time limits.
Jessica?
I'm gonna go with no. You know, if we didn't get anything else done today, this was...
So we got one, two, three, four, five, six yeses, one, two, three...
Wait, we discussed conditions?
Uh, nos, and one question mark, so... All right. What's the final question? That's it? Or do you... You wanna, as far as the conditional use permits, can we ask one more question and put a time limit on the use permits? Can we do that, Mark?
Yeah.
All right. All right. Jessica?
Five years. Five.
Yes or no?
Oh, I thought we were giving it a get. Yes or no? Yes.
You're making it harder than it is, see?
Yes.
The chalk one?
John?
No, because I think judicially it's meaningless.
Bob?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
I'm yes. Yeah?
Do you make a decision?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, assuming we're doing it.
John?
Yes.
And Shannon? Okay. We've given some pretty good direction as far as that's concerned. Now what do we need direction on?
Well, now you've created the category of where... What overlays you want to approve initially, in addition to sand bridge, and what you want your process to be. And then you have to then go through the regulations that you want and don't want for where they are permitted, I believe.
Yeah, but the conclusion of that vote is that where there's not an overlay district, conditional use permits are available to everybody else.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that got captured. Danger, danger, roll over.
They have to come in and apply for them, but...
True, but it's still a fact.
Could we kind of have a just a synopsis of all of this and then pick this up at our next meeting to go through with some of these other things?
Yes, ma'am.
To give us time to get some feedback on what this process might be and so forth.
Can I make a recommendation? Can I recommend that you go ahead next week and put on your agenda the three alternatives that were recommended to the planning commission and the alternative that came back, and that you vote them all down? And then you can continue to talk about what ordinance that you want to refer back at a later date when you get to that point. That would be my recommendation.
We're gonna clean sweep. I do like that sweep down at the point.
Everybody agree with that?
Yes, I do.
Anybody object?
So functionally, though, just so I'm clear, so in an absence of the regulations, then it's a status quo? Until... Yeah, I would say that it would be status quo until we have however many more meetings we need doing this process to get to an ordinance you're ready to refer and get it back from the planning commission and vote on.
Can't give a planning commission until September anyway, so we can't...
So you got time to talk, but I do think this is helpful to staff. I don't know whether you found it useful use of your time.
But it seems to me that if you can put what we've decided to deny together, that gives a foundation for making the rest of the decisions as far as the regulation.
We will put something together that interprets or puts to paper what the votes you... Or what the straw poll that you did tonight was, and then what we see as the next group of questions that you need to answer, and then we'll come back and let you, if you choose, answer those.
Well, I think we're gonna have to do that, because we've done a good... I think council's done a good job tonight of giving some direction. It might have been painful, but it's...
Great sausage making tonight, Mr. President.
I don't think it was painful up until this point. I think we've made some...
Yeah, we've made some headway.
I think all the discussion made time.
I'm sorry?
I have a question if I could.
Jim has a question.
So, just in the logistics of this, because I fear that this may happen. If we determine that grandfathering is going to be at a certain date, what are the elements of securing your property? The reason I ask that is I've had a number of people ask me that question. And, for example, the property is not currently a short-term rental. It's a 12-month rental, for example. And they say, well, you know, I may want to do this in the future. Can I register and do that? But if they do that, then are they immediately obligated to pay transient occupancy tax on a year-round rental?
That would be a interpretation for Phil, I would think.
Less than 91 days. Right, but what I'm saying is if they... How... So can they register it if it's not an active, short-term rental?
I think the answer should be yes. You have to be engaged in the business to register. I don't think that's true.
Again, I think that's...
Well, I mean, you'd have to... You're assuming a fact, and that is that just registering would be your grandfathering test. I think the way we had originally proposed grandfathering is you had to register and you had to have paid tax on a short-term rental. And we could word it that way. So you wouldn't, you know... If you're already renting for less than 91 days, whether you registered or not, you're supposed to be paying, you know...
You're supposed to collect it from your patrons.
Right, so...
For the purposes of what you're gonna draw up, let's interpret it that way, and then...
So it would be registered and paid transient occupancy tax on a short-term rental by a date that will subsequently be decided.
You're smart, you'll make it January of this year.
Well, and you might do that, so people should be aware that that doesn't necessarily... That you can't necessarily go out tomorrow and do that and be assured that you're in.
I don't think you know... I was thinking, get it on.
All right, let's go.
The commissioner provided a response to Ms. Abbott's questions in June of 2017, had 1,337 registered, and the independent contractor had 165 properties under surveillance for determination. A year later, this year, June of 18, we had 2,017 registered and 145 under surveillance.
When did we pass the ordinance that clarified that they had to register?
Two years ago.
So...
It was...
Sixteen?
It was fall of sixteen, wasn't it, Dana?
And it was as of end of the year.
You had the August of sixteen, and then we had debris down last May-June to address the state law.
But the first notice was the August one?
Correct.
Of sixteen?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. You know what your direction is, Mr. City Attorney?
I know the next step along the path, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hanson, which one do you want to go to?
Yes, sir, we're gonna jump on our quarterly stormwater program.
Thank you.
Do you want to do that? You don't want to boot that, because the smart scale has to go. They've got a time constraint.
I guess you better hustle, all right? Tony? So Tony Aldrich here, she's our engineer center administrator, stormwater engineering center administrator, and we're gonna fly through some charts today on an update. Most of them, you've got your fingers on the pulse, but we'll take your questions.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I'm just gonna go over the flood control projects in the CIP. You've seen this slide before. I want to point out a couple of things that are different. I've added the Southern Canal Lead Ditch and Culvert Improvement Project, since that project did receive... Is receiving funding July 1. And I moved Asheville Park to the end. So all of the projects are on schedule, with the exception of two are yellow, and I'll go into some more detail on those. And I actually made Central Resort District green this time, because it did receive $500,000, which we're gonna get started on the design for one of the interim improvement projects. So moving ahead, Aragona Drainage. As I mentioned, this project, I have yellow on the scale, and we had included Overman Avenue in the... We added Overman Avenue to the scope at the beginning of the year. The engineer estimate came in, and it's above the funding, and it's only about $265,000 above the funding. So we're gonna wait for this project to go to bid and include... If the bids come in good, we will include that section, second section of Overman Avenue later. So this kind of shows the new limits of the project. So the second quarter activities include... The design is continuing. We're 90% complete. We are going to advertise this for construction in October. We originally said we were gonna go to construction or advertise for construction in April. We're a couple of months behind, because the stormwater master planning, modeling for this project just was completed in April. Construction is expected to be complete. It'll take 15 months to be complete in spring of 2020. Central Resort District, as I mentioned, we're gonna begin construction... We're gonna begin design on the first interim improvement project, which is replacing the 42-inch pipe located under 24th Street. So we're currently negotiating a work order for that. Chub Lake, Lake Bradford. I'm gonna kind of move through the first slides, because you guys are already familiar with the scope of these projects, and focus on the second quarter activities. We're continuing to coordinate with the Navy to open the irrigate when major rain events are forecasted. We received the permit to remove the sediment from the ditch between Nider Boulevard and Boone Clinic, and dredging should begin in the next 60 days. The Navy has provided the ditch and culvert crossing information to us. We're able to include that in the stormwater model, and that's gonna be for Watershed 31.
I have that question on the culvert. Are you working on that to be an automated thing, since once you have the coordinated rules of engagement, that that can be activated remotely and can be turned off?
Oh, you're talking about this one, okay, sorry.
Yeah, we're talking about getting the... To let you, you know, let the water flow. Are you working on that to be an automated thing that will be radio dispatched, and so that once the decision is made, that that's a... You know, you got pumping station you can turn on from your iPhone. But I'm just curious, you know, because timing is... All that stuff is important.
Right.
How quickly it gets done, and I would hope that that would be some kind of an automated power-driven opening and closing.
We don't have it for this one, because it's on the military property.
The lady already knows how to put those in.
Yes, we'll coordinate that with them. And the early implementation projects are underway. The survey has begun for the 780 linear feet of ditch from the north side of Shore Drive and the 1,150 linear feet of ditch from Pleasure House Road west to Lake Bradford. Eastern Shore Drive Drainage Phase 1. I did modify this slide a little bit to show you the four pump stations that are gonna be constructed with this project. So the second quarter activities include... We did have a meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers for... Discuss the pre-application joint permit. We're continuing to coordinate with utilities, HSD. We had a coordination meeting with Parks Recreation to discuss going through the bulkhead for pump station 1A and 1B. And we had a presentation for the Lynn Haven Colony Civic League, where we discussed the Phase 1 Sections 1 and 2 improvements. The Cape Henry Canal Drainage Improvement Design Project, this is one of the interim projects that's ongoing. It's a box culvert from Eptide to West Great Neck Road. The side street outfall improvements are also included, and that's on Starfish Road, Eptide Road, and Red Tide Road. We expect to advertise for construction this September. That project is estimated to cost $3 million, and that project provides an improved drainage outfall for the Shore Drive Phase 3 roadway project. Oh, and we are also acquiring the parcel for the future pump station, and that's... Those approvals are underway. Sherwood Lakes Drainage Improvements. We're continuing to pump down the lakes to elevation 3 in advance of any significant rainfall. The design for the pump station vault, the lake intake pipe, outfall pipe, and the pump station and interconnect pipe is complete. The interconnect pipe, it's a separate project. We advertised that for construction this past Sunday. Bids will be opened on July 31, and we are in the process of conducting a value engineering report for the pump station design. Southern Canal...
On that?
Yes, ma'am.
So the emergency pumping that is occurring?
Yes.
Is doing the pump down. The pump station will just make that permanent instead of temporary?
Yes, ma'am.
So the work is actually being accomplished. It's just that it's with the temporary pump rather than the permanent pump.
Yes, ma'am.
So if there were to be a severe storm this fall, the people will have the benefit of that emergency pump? So, just so they're more comfortable that...
Yes, that's why we are keeping the lake at elevation 3.
Right, so the work is being done. It's just that we're gonna do it with a better pump and a pump station later, but right now they're getting the benefit of it with the temporary pump.
Yes.
Yes, John?
Since we're building a lot of these pumping stations, are we thinking of creating a family of pumps, like large, medium, and small, or whatever it is, so that we're... So that the number of pumps and models that we're sustaining citywide from maintenance point of view, because this is what airline, everybody else does, minimize, standardizing the sizes of pumps, even if one might be too big? And are we also looking at templates of our pumping stations, so we're not paying architectural redesign every time we make one? You know, Starbucks doesn't do that, went to a lot of places. So are we standardizing so we have this small kind of modification made to the site, but we're not redesigning how the pumping... How big it's gonna be, the square, the materials, the composition? And it's just, are we doing that? So we have an inventory of like you do with programming, here's my code for this, I pull up my... I need a large pumping station, and here's X, and I got that. Are we doing that to cut the...
To the extent we can. Some situations are a little more have a unique aspect than others. Some don't need to pump during the storm, others may need to pump during the storm. They'll be a little bit different.
I'm just trying, because this all gets to the long-term... You know, buying a boat is cheap, maintaining is what's expensive. I'm just looking at the long-term fund, making sure that we're keeping the lowest minimal diversity, maximum interchangeability to keep our maintenance costs low. Thank you.
Southern Canal Lead Ditch and Culvert Improvements. This project received $990,000 from the Agricultural Reserve Program this upcoming CIP. It originally only had $400,000 appropriated each year, so the 1.39 million is the total that is allocated per year. The first projects that we're gonna be working on under this program, the first one is Dolly Road between Pleasant Ridge Road and Gumbridge Road. The scope is gonna be pavement overlay and excavate and widen the ditches. The next project is Pleasant Ridge Road west of Dolly Road, and for that project, we're gonna be replacing the culvert under the roadway. We're gonna reshape and regrade the ditches and relocate the above-ground utilities. And the third project is Gumbridge Road between Dolly Road and Charity Neck Road, and that project includes road improvements, culvert replacement, widen ditches, and relocating the above-ground utilities. While Public Works Engineering is working on the design of these projects, Public Works Operations is gonna begin the ditch work, so you'll see them getting out there later this year.
May I just ask? I noticed you're doing Pleasant Ridge west of Dolly, but it's east of Dolly that Pleasant Ridge really has the flooding really bad. And I'm assuming that you all are still looking at that at some point?
Yeah.
It's just that that won't be this year?
Yes, ma'am. We have a whole program of projects, so that is on the list. This is just the first ones we can do. This is a smaller one that we can knock out sooner.
Just so we know that it's going to get there, it's just not during this project.
And Stormwater Master Planning, Analysis, and Modeling. So I want to point out again that when I say that a model is complete, that is a validated and calibrated model. We don't actually get the final report from the consultant for a couple of months after that, so these dates represent a validated and calibrated model. So for the Lynn Haven, watersheds 3 through 8 are complete. Watershed 30 was supposed to be complete in April. However, we ran into a lot of data gaps in this watershed, so the revised schedule is the end of this month. We should have that later this week. Watershed 31 has been accelerated. That will be done later this week. It was originally going to be completed in October. And Watershed 1 will be complete by December 2018. Up for the Atlantic Ocean Watershed, Watershed 29 has been accelerated, and that will be complete by December instead of January.
I have a question for you, Ron. Because I took some time, spent an hour looking at the model. Does that mean that for Watersheds 3 and 8, you know how we talked about showing incrementally as you had certain tides and change the parameters, you could incrementally show by time how water would flood and would cover... So for Watersheds 3 and 8, we could actually... You have the data to show that simulation?
Yes, sir, we haven't done it yet.
And... I think when the time comes here, if you haven't taken the time to sit down with the staff and actually look at the simulation of the models and how, under different tidal conditions, the water rises, I highly recommend you take the time to do that. And I think when we talk about in August, you gotta at least take an example to show them the capability, because it's a very good visual to show you the time lapse and show you how the areas become inundated with water and how much. It's quite instructional.
Moving on to the Elizabeth River Watersheds, Watershed 2 will be complete in August, and Watershed 17 through 22 will be complete in February of next year. And for the Southern Rivers, Watersheds 10 and 12 were delayed. They were scheduled to be complete by the end of this month. They are going to be complete by the end of this month, and last time I had reported they would be complete in April, so they will be here later this week. Watershed 9 will be complete in August. Watersheds 11, 16, 23 through 28 are now scheduled to be complete in August. They were originally... August of 2019, they were originally going to be complete at the end of this year. And Watersheds 13, 14, and 15, we had anticipated them being complete in January next year, and now they are on track to be done in August of 2019.
Yes, Ms. Emily has a question.
This is a part of my great concern, and I know the time has continued to slip back. I was under the impression that Watershed 9 was complete, but I guess it's still not quite complete. quite complete. But then looking at all of these to the south, they're not even begun yet, because I think you all had said if you changed and did have used another modeling.
Right.
So you're still going to be using the same process you've used before, and that's why it slipped, or?
No, we are going, we are using a new, it's called Mike, and we are using that as the modeling for this watershed, because.
None of these down in the south have been even begun yet.
No, the biggest issue with the way, the reason this schedule has slipped on the stormwater modeling, to be honest with you, is resources. A lot of the watersheds have data gaps. That's when, when we get the models back from the consultant, there are areas that are missing information, so we actually have to send people out in the field or do research online for, of plan sets, trying to find all of that information. So we have, my staff, there's about four people working full-time on this, so that's why these schedules have slipped. And the same thing in the southern watershed. We've already initiated the work orders for the southern watershed. It's just finding all the data.
I'm particularly looking at 23, since that's the one that borders 9 and is kind of getting all the attention now, but there's such extreme flooding in that particular one, you know, and not knowing, since it's, I guess the borderline is sort of these properties that we're talking about.
Yes.
And having these immediately south of it, not having had any modeling or study at this point is just really a concern.
And as you can see, I mean, the ones that we can accelerate, we do accelerate. So what I'm giving you now is the information I have to date. If we can move these things ahead, we're doing that as much as we can.
John.
I want to help you historically, but cost of sensors have radically dropped. You know, they're like pennies on the dollar. So I would hope as we're looking at where we're doing this data collection, that we're thinking of coming back to the City Manager Proposal, what does it take to have the sensors so we're not having to manually collect data, because sensors are just so cheap compared to.
We have 10 out there now.
That's not many for the size of the city.
That's the pilot program, and it'll grow to 20 or 30 in the future. We will be rolling out some software called Storm Sense this fall for that, where everybody can download an app and they'll be able to see these elevations. You can see them on the internet right now.
I'm just intrigued, as cheap as they are, data is inexpensive to collect. Very cheap.
Okay, moving on to Windsor Woods, Princess Anne Plaza, and the lakes. We are moving full speed ahead on this project. Lots of information to share today. The design is underway for the early implementation projects, and those are, that's the project on Clubhouse Road that I've briefed on before, and what we're calling the three FEMA reimbursement projects were those pipe projects. The preliminary engineering analysis is nearing completion. We'll have a draft of the Windsor Woods report later this week, and the draft report for Princess Anne Plaza and the lakes by the end of July. The pump stations locations analysis report is nearing completion, and we hope to have that by the end of July. We've created a project brochure for this, for these projects. We've been handing it out at Civic League, because that's what's pictured on the slide here. And we have a draft schedule of the improvements, including a concept plan, and I'll show you the concept plan in just a second. So we have established a Visionary Planning Action Committee, VPAC. It's coordination between Public Works, Public Utilities, Housing and Neighborhood Development, Parks and Rec, Planning, SGA, and Emergency Management. On May 15th, we met with VDEM to discuss the FMA grant pre-application. We have three projects that we're submitting for that grant funding. I'll go over them next. We had a pre-application meeting with the Corps of Engineers on May 30th to discuss the Thalia Creek tide gate. They seemed very receptive to the plan. We're going to continue meeting with them.
Where's that tide gate located? Is that underneath the interstate, or is that at the boulevard?
I will show you a slide in just a minute exactly where that is. On June 11th, the Visionary Planning Action Committee met with the city's Strategic Goals Team Number Four. We had a joint meeting to discuss a lot of the things that we're working on in this neighborhood. On June 19th, the pre-applications for the FMA grant were submitted to VDEM. We found out that the Notice of Funding Opportunity is expected to be published and released in August, and the grant period for submitment is October 1st, so we are way ahead of schedule on this project, on submitting for the grants. And finally, we attended two Civic League meetings. Okay, this is one of the FMA grant projects. It's what we refer to as a bottleneck project. It's estimated to cost about $64,000, and this is where a larger pipe outfalls to a smaller pipe, which essentially creates a bottleneck. So the existing stormpipe crossing at Carriage Hill Road near the intersection with King's Arm Drive goes from a 21-inch pipe to a 12-inch pipe and then back up to a 24-inch pipe. So for this project, we're going to actually replace about 30 linear feet of pipe, of the 12-inch pipe, and replace it with a 24-inch pipe. The next FMA grant project is the Thalia Gate Project, and this is where it's located. It's going to be on Thalia Creek, just south of Interstate 264. This is actually a very high priority project, because one of the first things that we need to do to help the flooding in these neighborhoods is to limit the tide from coming back into the stormwater management system. So this project will block the tidal flow coming in from Thalia Creek. The project is expected to cost about $5 million, and the gate will be about 150 feet wide, and it's going to be across Thalia Creek, right there near Lake Windsor.
And what's the height, what tidal gauge will the water rise up on the land to go around the gate?
I think, I believe the gate is about 15 feet high.
About 15.
But what's the elevation of the terrain that you're talking of the land on either side?
You're exactly right. That's what we want to take advantage of, the natural elevation really that's in there. And because there's no point in going higher.
But it is, but that's okay. I haven't measured, but I've been out there, I just didn't know how high it was. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Because I walked underneath the interstate.
And the next project. We've, the Clubhouse Road Drainage Improvement Project, I have briefed you on this before, but this is a project, we're actually going to submit this project for the FMA grant as well. This project is going to redirect the flows along Rosemont Road by installing 48-inch of storm drain along Clubhouse Road to the Bow Creek Golf Course. It's expected to cost approximately $2 million. So the design is in progress on this, on this project. The survey and geotech work are underway. We expect to be complete by the design in October and start construction in January of 19. And as a second piece of that, the acquisition will be complete in September 19, and then we'll continue to work onto the golf course. And these are the three pipe projects that we applied the FEMA reimbursement funding to. This map shows the location of those three projects. The survey is under, the design is in progress and the survey work is underway. We're going to combine Projects 2 and 3, and we expect to start construction on those in January of 2020. And we expect to start construction on Project Number 1 in July of 2020. These are the five dredging projects in Windsor Woods. Two of the five canals are complete. So this is the first project that's complete. This is Windsor Oaks West 1. You can see the before photo there, and this is the after photo. The next project, Windsor Oaks West 2, this one is complete. This is the before photo and the after photo. The next few slides, oops, are active dredging projects, the Windsor Woods Canal Project. This project should be complete by the end of July. The next one, the Northgate Ditch Project in Princess Anne Plaza, will be, also be complete by the end of July. And the Windsor Oaks West 3 Project. This project has been delayed. We're still waiting on right-of-entry for three easements. We are expecting to begin construction in October and be complete by July of next year.
How many easements did we have to get without?
Total, I'm not sure how many we need. I can get back to you on that one. So this is, I want to give you a glimpse of the preliminary plan, the concept plan. It includes three pump stations. The first one is at Windsor Woods, Lake Windsor, I'm sorry. That's the one I just showed you where the gate is going to be. Two potential stormwater ponds, one at Bow Creek Golf Course, one at Northgate Plaza Ballfields, and two other pump stations. One you can see on London Bridge Creek to the north, and another one to the south, going down towards West Net Creek. So the biggest issues with the three neighborhoods, I want to reiterate, we're going to need to construct barriers and gates to block the incoming tides. We're going to need to construct these three pump stations. We need to add additional lake storage capacity, which we'll be able to do at Lake Windsor and Lake Trashmore by pumping them down, and then create additional retention and storage lengths in Princess Anne Plaza and the lakes, at the Bow Creek Golf Course, and the Northgate Plaza Ballfields. And finally, in all of the neighborhoods, we need to increase the stormwater conveyance capacity. This is a photo of the Rosemont Forest Pump Station to give you an idea of one of the pump stations, stormwater pump stations we currently have in the city. There's actually nine stormwater pump stations in the city, and the largest one is at 42nd Street down at the oceanfront. And then this next photo is an example of a tide gate. Something similar to this, but much larger at Lake Windsor.
It would be nice to know, I think, is when the project's complete and everything is done, just, I know from an insurance company point of view, how they look at that neighborhood, and it would really be nice to know, Mr. Mayor, just, you know, the kind of flood insurance reduction or zone changes, and that's, because that's real money in people's pocket, and also makes this housing, which is affordable, more affordable, because it's less at risk, and they're not facing, some of those people I know had like $300 a month or $200 a month, flood payments just because of the risk zones. It would be nice to know at the end, because that's a secondary benefit that goes right into the pocketbook of the people that live in those neighborhoods. Great, great, great news story.
Yes, John.
Well, it may even be, to John's point, it might be who wants it done to, in some way, get notice to those homeowners in those areas so they can contact their insurers. I mean, not, not all insurers act instantly to reduce those premiums for their customers, so it may be a good thing to actually send letters out to, because, I mean, we can identify the homes that are in there and say, this work has been done. It has changed the designation from this to this so that they can actually get in touch with their insurers and ask for, you know, fees that are commensurate with the risk.
We'll get a memo to you. I believe it's a fairly rigorous process to get the floodplain changed, and there's a review of the quality of your project and all that, but certainly it is our goal that the flood insurance in these neighborhoods will be dramatically reduced when this is done.
Well, given all this modeling and stuff that we've done, we should have no shortage of data to do that.
It's got more to do with evaluating the quality of the projects.
I know, I understand, but my point is I think it can be done. It's the last mile.
Well, can I ask that question to you, Tom? So is that, is that part of our process, is after we finish design and build of these that we go back and we ask for a reevaluation of those?
Actually, let the subject matter explain.
We're working with, so Michael Baker's our engineer for this project. Dewberry is our sea level rise mitigation and adaptation. We're having the two of them look at it. We're trying to, as we're designing, we want to make sure we design to enough that we would get reduction. So we want to do it beforehand, not afterhand, to make sure we're doing it. So we're working with those two to talk to FEMA about, we may not be able to remove the 100, them out of the 100-year floodplain, but we want to make sure we get a reduction. Through also, you heard, we're looking at CRS reductions, according to the CRS program at FEMA. These are those things we're looking at, and the elevations are critical, because we want to make sure, what are those elevations, so we design to it. And those will kind of guide us as we're designing to what level we're building up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Jessica.
I just want to add to that. Their problem with a lot of this area from the, for the practicality of who's talking to these people about their flood insurance is, once they're repetitive loss, it's going to be extremely hard for them to get any kind of reduction premium-wise, because they've had more than two losses in their house. I don't think it's going to matter, and I could be wrong about that. Maybe FEMA has a separate way to apply out of that, but once they've had two or more repetitive losses, they're higher, they're, they're subject to new, underwriting, they're subject to new requirements, new premium schedules, and those are the ones that are seeing the biggest impact, and a lot of those houses are already in next flood zone, so that's just, that. That's a big part of this area at least.
Let's continue.
Okay, moving on to Asheville Park. So we continue to pump down the lake system prior to significant storm events. We received the 30% plans at the beginning of April. On April 16th, we received the 30% pump station plans. We had a static elevation gauge installed at Flanagan's Lane to monitor the water surface elevation in that ditch. We staked 150-foot buffer at Lake Number 6 so that the property owners in Heritage Park could get an idea of how far away that the BMP would be extended. And on April 24th, we obtained the right-of-entry to construct the weir. And on April 25th, the bids were open for that weir project, and Public Works Operations is negotiating the rates for that contract. Construction is expected to begin in July.
Another question we move. Are the pumps that we're using here, are they like off-the-shelf pumps, or do we have to order them? There's a six-month lead time. What's the nature of the pumps that we use in terms of size?
I don't know. You're exactly right. These are not off-the-shelf because they're so big, so there is lead time to order it. Fortunately, when you're building it, you're building a web well and all that, so there's a lot of work that they can do while they are ordering in the pumps they go into.
Is it like a six-month lead time, three months, one year? I don't know.
I know more than six months. It's six months. These aren't getting as big as what we have up at 16th Street and 42nd, which took a year or so to order. But you're right, for Windsor Woods, those large pumps will take a long time to order, and they even test them at the facility before they send them out, because those are large pumps.
I'm just trying to make sure as we're looking, and I'm sure you are, but this is a question from my own satisfaction, that we've got the timing and we know so that we don't have a pump station that will pump the pump in it.
There's a temporary pump there, and that stays there until that pump station's ready.
All right, all right. Thanks very much.
Okay, on April 27th, a draft term sheet for a cost participation agreement with the developer was provided in the Friday package to council, as you know. On May 1st, Barry and Tom gave a presentation to council on the zoning history of Asheville Park and details of that cost participation agreement. We met with the homeowners along Flanagan's Lane to discuss the pumping operation and how it affects the water in the ditch, and that was on May 2nd. We met with Fish and Wildlife to discuss the water quality, and we provided them the 30% plans, and we continue to work with them to get an easement to do the ditch improvements that we need to do in Phase 1. On last week, Tom Leahy gave a city council briefing on the CPA, and on June 20th, following that meeting, we met with the developer to discuss some revisions to the CPA. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Tom. He's going to go over some more information on that cost participation agreement.
Thanks, Tony.
So the item that you had last week on your agenda contained two primary requests to modify the proffers. One that has received a lot of attention was the number of lots that would be built in Village C and the transfer of lots among the four of the five villages. Something that didn't get quite as much attention and is very, very important was the request to modify lot sizes in Villages C, D, and E. And the reason that's important is, we go through and look at some of the CPA proposals that the developer feels they can implement. that the developer feels they can implement, require that at least these lot size modifications go forward. It's necessary for them to be able to market a product that is, is currently in demand by the, by the public. So this is the, what I, I guess I'd call the primary issues that were focused in the CPA, the cost participation agreement that we brought to you last week. The number of lots in Village C was 116. That'd be an increase from 98. These lot modifications I just mentioned were also in that items on your agenda. The developer's cost share would have been 3.1 million, with the city cost share of 8 million. The city was also going to give back to the developer 400,000 to own BMP 10A. The all-other easements and right-of-way would be dedicated by the developer at no cost. That would allow us to net about $2 million of stormwater credits. The total number of lots in all of Asheville would be 499. And there was a provision that if there were cost savings in the bidding process, that the city and the developer would share those cost savings after the first million dollars of savings would go to the developer. The construction schedule would have, would be April 2019 to June 20. So we did meet with the developer and had a number of discussions. There are a couple of other proposals that the developer feels they can move forward with. One, we'll just call it Proposal Two, for lack of any other imagination, just Proposal Two. That would keep 98 units at Village C. However, the developer would still need those lot modifications for them to provide the product they think they can market. The developer, since most of the revenue from the cost sharing would have come from these additional lots, the developer would not be in a position to share in the cost of, the cost of Phase One, so the city would pick up the entire 11.1 million dollars. However, the developer would donate all, and dedicate all rights-of-way, including BMP, in fee simple, so we would still net $2 million in stormwater credits. That would reduce the total number of lots in Asheville to 481. On the, on any cost savings from, from the bidding environment, the city would collect 90% of those savings. And the developer still feels they could put that project in and get it built by June of 2020. The third one, something the developers also feels they can do, would have 116 lots in Village C. They still, again, would need the lot modifications. There would not be a developer cost share, so the city would pay 11.1 million dollars. But again, the developer would dedicate all rights-of-way, including the fee simple for BMP 10A, and we would then still net the $2 million in stormwater credits. The developer did agree that they would eliminate from any development all of the lots in Village D. So essentially, they would give up 44 lots, and that would drop the total number of lots in Asheville Park to 455 lots. It is a 452-acre development, so essentially, it would be achieving the one lot per acre guidelines, in the, in the transition zone guidelines. Again, for sharing the, in the, in the cost share of any savings due to the bidding environment, the city would collect 90% of that. And again, the developer believes they can complete this work by June 2020. So the last, I guess, alternative, which would be essentially not, no participation and with the developer, and we really don't recommend that. I've put this up here to show you some of the issues that would accrue. But the fact of the matter is, we believe that this would be very, very difficult to move forward without any cooperation with the developer. But let's say that the council took no action, and the city was going to move forward on Phase One. So the lots in Village C would stay at 98. There would be no modifications to the lot sizes in Village C. Of course, there'd be no cost share. The city would pick up a larger cost now, for a couple reasons. But the primary one being that the cost of excavation, Phase One is highly dependent upon the cost of excavation, because there's a lot of earth that has to be moved. If that earth is moved and used on-site, it has a much lower cost. And if it's moved, it has to be disposed of off-site. So the higher number assumes that the city would have to dispose most of that excavation off-site. As far as the cost for acquiring the, acquiring the easements and the fee simple title, that's really to be determined. There are, the laws have tightened up a lot, and actually in the developer's favor. If we acquire, for example, even if we acquire open space for a BMP, the developer has to be compensated at least at the cost as if that property were developable. So we really don't have a real good handle on what all that would cost, other than we know it would not be insignificant. But you, and we don't know, the stormwater credits, again, that would tie into whether or not, how much we would have to pay for that property, and whether or not that would then become a wise acquisition or not. With respect to the total lots in Nashville Park, they remain, I guess, as they remain right now, which would be 494 potential lots. There would be no cost share on any favorable bids. We would not be able to give a notice to proceed before one year from next month, and we feel it would take us at least two years. And again, those are numbers that we can tell you right now, we think. But when you start getting multiple contractors on the same area, if there are conflicts, it can, it can almost grind to a halt. So this is not something that we think that the staff ought to be considered. But again, this is going to be council's decision. So those are all the, that's the only, the next chart says questions, so I won't go to that. I'll leave this chart up. And if anybody needs to, I'll put this up to their staff. Ms. Henley?
Well, I was just, just raising my hand. But I don't understand why you're going to have to, the excavation part. I don't understand why, by leaving the lots larger, that it's costing more to excavate. I think that's what you said the additional cost is from.
I didn't mean to imply that. Most of the cost of Phase One is the excavation for the BMPs. If that excavation, if that soil is used by whoever excavates on their own sites to, does, put it in different places, and it's a short distance to move it, then the cost is low. If, for example, it's the city having to excavate these BMPs, and we're not able to dispose of it on the developer's property, we have to haul it somewhere else to dispose of it. And so that was the two prices. We actually, our engineering report actually had two prices for Phase One. One was 11.1 million, assuming a very low cost of excavation, that the developer would use a lot of that on-site. The other was a higher cost, assuming that it would be excavated, I mean, taken off-site and disposed of off-site.
Do we know if the developer would use the material?
Well, I assume in that fourth, fourth alternative, that there would be some cooperation at the end. But I, keep in mind, this is potentially, you could get it to crossways and...
I'm sorry, I mean, those couple of ones, just to, like where it's 11.1 million, where you assume that you're going to use it, you're going to lose the dirt on their site.
Right, that's assuming the lower cost.
They've said they would do that?
Yes, sir. The proposals one, two, and three assume that the developer will be doing most of that earthwork. We'll be doing this off-site work, the pump station, the weir, the work of Cambridge Road. But the developer would be doing most of this work on-site as they develop Village C.
And another thing I didn't quite understand, you said the reason the developer wants to change, wants to modify the lots is because of the market wanting these lots to be smaller?
The developer feels that... What the developer can develop and have something that they can market and actually sell and make a, some kind of return on, requires these smaller lots. When I say smaller, smaller than 20,000, but they're still in the 13 and a half to 18,000 square foot lots. So they are one-third to pushing a little less than a half-acre lots. So they're not small lots.
And they're similar to Heritage Park next door, and the...
I know, I know all of that, but I just don't understand why. Not that particular part of it, but I guess I've got some time to understand it.
And I, and I'm not the developer, so...
Yeah, I just don't understand those explanations.
All right, anybody else have any questions? Yes.
What's on the agenda on the third?
Ah, well, we, we expected to bring this back to you, have this discussion.
What's on the agenda? We deferred, we deferred the first column, the first one.
Yes.
Are we going to put the other three on the agenda for discussion? Can we do that?
Well...
I think you're right. I think we got to, these ought to all be on there, because I'll be, we've taken this on for ourselves. There's three of them, and based on discussion, we'll make a recommendation on that.
Well, I would just, I hope that there's a lot of public information to, to, out to the public, because what we really need to know is that the public needs to understand all this as well as we do, because there has been a lot of discussion about this. And I guess we're going to be getting more firm information. But one of the things that I've asked, and I sent an email to the city attorney's office, was if we agree to the lot modifications, what are we accepting? And what is our future responsibility? I don't want us to make the same mistake that we've made in the past. We've gotten in this mess that we're in because there was a land use plan approved, and we accepted a drainage plan that doesn't work. I want to know what our responsibility is for each of these options, what our future responsibility is to the developer for any future development, and for the future part of this drainage plan, which I noticed this time in our material, it only shows Phase One, where in, in all of them up until now, it's shown the balance to complete, because this is Phase Two. I want to know what's our responsibility to doing Phase Two if we, if we take this action and, and do this. I think it's really important that we know what we're getting ourselves into, whatever we're doing. And I want to know in writing what all of our actions will result in, as far as what then we are responsible for doing.
Yes, Joe.
I mean, I think that's a good point. So for, what's our expectation for Village D and E in terms of those homes being able to be permitted absent us acting on Phase Two?
I've made it very clear, without building Phase Two, we do not believe that Villages D and E would satisfy the construction plan requirements in your code that says that they must have a stormwater system that's acceptable to the Director of Public Works. And I was just saying that everybody's going to agree with that, but that would be our position.
Okay. So, so if I could, Mr. Mayor, my follow-up question would be, by, if we were to enact these changes in there, does that in any way make us required to actually do Phase Two on the city's expense? Because we may be, you know, accepting, you know, 3.1 million dollars, and you can, if you want to add in the credits, you know, on there as well. We may be doing that, but then, you know, setting ourselves up for the requirement to then pay for Phase Two, which could be a lot more expensive than any savings we may receive today. So that's, that's the issue I'm kind of wrestling with.
Let's get an answer, see if Tom has an answer to that.
Well, we'll get an answer, work with the law department. I don't believe the council's under any obligation to fund and direct us to go forward on Phase Two. And I don't think that Phase One, Phase One stands by itself. It makes, it makes improvements to Asheville Park. It does alleviate a lot of the problems. If you didn't build Phase Two, they'd still be better off, much better off than they are now.
But in these presentations that we have heard made before us at the open mic nights, the Asheville Park people are saying, we want you to do Phase One, and then soon after Phase Two, because there's that, we are saying that Phase One is not going to fix it. And so there's this expectation that we're going to be doing Phase Two. And I want to know really where our responsibility is. And then if we go add another 100 houses in there, is that expectation even stronger? I really want to know what we're, we're looking at for the future. And I know John has a question, I'm sorry. I don't know.
No, no, no.
Go ahead.
You're the, just the person.
John, John still has a follow-up to his question.
I'm not in any hurry.
My question is, are we confident that Phase One alone is going to solve the drainage issues for the 299 that are currently there, as well as the additional 116 that would be in Village C? Or is it going to take, does Village C then make it so that the second phase for Asheville has to happen?
No, Phase One was designed for Villages A, B, and C. It will dramatically improve the performance and level of service for A and D. It will not bring them up to the perfect design standard that we would want. There is pipe work in Villages A and B that would be necessary for that. But you would be not, you would not be obligated to fund it, but...
But would that make, what about Village C? Would Village C with Phase One be perfect?
Village C would, Village C would meet our standards, because this time we'll make sure that the pipes and the inlets are big enough. The problem, and some of the problems in Villages A and B are the pipes and the inlets are just too small.
Okay, thank you.
My question goes, is to Phase Two, picking up on Barbara's thoughts. Since there is no current site plan that's approved for C, so when they put C in, it's going to have, I guess, the 60-inch pipes that we say we would need in Phase Two to put in parcels A and B. So here's my question. So when it comes to Phase Two, we can build, since obviously, we're obviously building the longer pipe all the way to the weir and the pumping station to support Phase Two when we build it, I trust, correct?
Phase Two, Phase Two would involve additional canals and BMPs in, in this area.
But not, but on their property or other property?
It would be on Asheville Park property. But it also involves pipe work over here.
Okay, just, here's what I'm truly trying to ascertain. Because in the end, I don't think you can get 44 houses on parcel D. When you look at that, I doubt that that's true, under your best day. What I'm asking is, if we, can we, since, or we're just putting in the 60-inch pipes, that's more flow. So I'm now looking at, now you're talking about at the very end, now where it drops off at the very end with the waterway, that's the drop point, right? So is that another pond? Or is the retention pond that we're now building in C big enough to take the water that would come from Phase Two? The Phase Two retention pond, when we, if we did Phase Two and did the 60-inch pipes in the outfalls, all on A and B, is the retention pond that would now be in parcel C under Phase One of sufficient size to take that water?
If we did, if we did the pipe work here, it will get water to these ponds faster. And if we were not building the additional BMPs and canals on that end, we would be very careful as we made those changes to make sure we knew what the consequence would be.
Yeah, because I, I think that sometimes that people are missing that point. Because if we do all that, to Barbara's point and to John's point, we end up being the first person to want to solve a problem. We pay the bigger cost, versus if we hold back and they want to market the property, they bear all that, that bigger cost, and we're on the margin end. It's like who, where the bargaining power is, and you ultimately goes, who pays the cost? I don't want to be stuck like we are here today, because we have A and B with people on it with the problem we need to solve and are going to. We don't need to put ourselves in that situation with Phase Two. That's all I'm saying.
There's one final point I'd like to make.
The development of D and E, by doing Phase Two, we accelerate and enable the development of D and E at a taxpayer's expense.
There's, there's additional capacity that has to go in. There's an additional pump station that has to go in. And we will elicit a significant cost participation before they can ever get approved to go down that road. You've got to understand, Phase Two also has subcomponents in it. Well, I share those subcomponents that really make, that accelerate or leverage what you're investing in, in Phase One, is the pipage that in Rainier Village and, and the intersection that it has with the main... with the main canals and pipage that connects to the BMPs that are currently in existence. What we really think is the advantage here is the leveraging of those TMDL credits and bringing that $2 million back into the project so that you can continue to take a look at how we optimize that pipage. When you put phase one in, we have told you in several briefings, we're still gonna have water in the street. We're gonna have water that could potentially damage cars, especially in Rainier Village. But we believe that we have modeled that by putting in this capacity, by pumping down, keeping water levels the way we're doing in Sherwood Lakes, the way we'll do in Windsor Woods, the way we'll do the whole city, burn pond and pump and maintain that, so when the rainy day comes, we got the capacity to hold it, we'll keep water out of their houses at the 100-year flood. And that's what we design and developers have to reach today. It's just, we can't meet the full flavor of 100-year flood, because we're gonna fill the street and we're gonna get up in their yards. And there are three homes there that have that low first floor, that garage elevation in there. We believe we still stay out of that, but we're right at that cusp right there. We add one or two major pipes, we connect those one or two major pipes in Rainier, and we alleviate, and we guarantee we stay out of their garages. And that is a huge victory for that neighborhood. And so, as we, as we take a look at the effectiveness of what we're doing here, the ability to maintain elevations, to handle capacity, the maintenance of those pipes where we've taken all the construction sediment that's moved in there and create maximum capacity in there, we believe that your investment in phase one helps a whole lot of families sleep a lot better at night. I think, I think time is of the essence, and waiting them out is probably not the option.
Well, I'll be on phase one, I'm not phase two.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say that this is not just about Asheville Park. And I think unfortunately, we're just talking Asheville Park. This affects a lot of other people as well. I know when I came out, was leaving church yesterday, somebody who was walking with me, who happens to live on New Bridge Road, says, well, what's gonna happen to us? It's our hoses too. And the very fact that that area hasn't even been modeled, and that they have a tremendous flooding problem, and I'm convinced part of that comes from Asheville Park. We have to think of the people downstream and what's happening to them as well. We're not talking about them at all, and that really concerns me. Ocean Lakes had some hoses flooded in Matthew. We don't talk at all about Ocean Lakes. And that's part of that area nine, I guess that's been modeled. But I think we have to make certain that we are, we're showing that we do have a great concern for everybody, and we're not putting all of our dollars and all of our attention just in Asheville Park, because there is a lot of other area that's affected as well. I'm also concerned that we have sort of a cavalier attitude about changing a plan. That was a plan that is a part of a conditional zoning. We have two large developments underway in Princess Anne right now that were also conditional plans. And I can guarantee you, those adjoining neighbors are watching to make sure those plans are met, the five-mile stretch plan up here, Princess Anne Meadows. We spent three years developing that plan. And changing or modifying that plan would bring out the neighborhood around that as well. And I know that on the King Farm, that the people on the other side of West Neck Road are watching the King Farm to make sure that that plan is not changed. And we've got two more of these plans in the pipeline now. And I'm assuming that when we adopt these conditional plans or these zonings that are based on a particular plan, that just coming back in and modifying the lots, because the developer thinks the market has changed and he needs another sized lot, is not a good enough reason to me. There needs to be some more good reason, and I'm really having a lot of difficulty with that, because I think our credibility in doing these conditional zonings is greatly at risk if we're really not meaning that these plans mean something. And so, I want to see that we are definitely concerned with everybody else. I know that as this plan developed, the folks in Heritage Park came down at every step along the way, expressed their concerns, the people on Flanagan's Lane have been involved. And I want to make certain that we are making sure that all of these other affected people are going to know what these change proposals are before we are called on to vote on them, and that they have a chance to understand and to weigh in and to know what we're approving. I know somebody used to sit in this mayor's seat, used to say all the time, act in haste, repent at leisure. I wanna make sure we're going to have plenty of time to understand exactly what we're doing, and we're not rushing anything. But I want to know what each of these proposals will result in as far as our future impact, and also any impact to other affected areas that's different from what they have now. I appreciate these other proposals, I think they certainly need to be looked at. But I wanna make sure that everybody has ample time to give consideration, and we know exactly what we're doing, and that we're also sure that we're not committing our future to just Asheville Park and not having anything left to be able to deal with these other surrounding areas that also have some problems. We can't just be concerned with one neighborhood. And so, I'll certainly appreciate looking at these impacts. Getting rid of Village D is certainly good, but I want to make certain that there's, that trade-off is worth it to the people that we promised when this plan was approved as it is. So, there's a lot to look at, a lot of questions to be asked.
That's my question, Tom. What is the impact of the reduction of the overall units in the project of 44 units? What's the impact of it?
Well, phase one was not, was designed only for Villages A, B, and C, and this did not involve Village D or E building. Obviously, if you take 40 acres, 40 units, that's probably around 20 acres. 17 acres, and that stays as permeable service as opposed to 38% impermeable, it's going to improve things. I don't know that we've actually modeled those scenarios. We set up, the solutions we brought to you assumed that it would develop in accordance with what you had already approved as a body and in accordance with the comprehensive plan. So, we could get that, we could get that. It will obviously make a small improvement. It's not gonna be the solution, but it will make an improvement.
Yes, Bill.
I think, I think one of the things we have to understand when people are, you know, it's like the Trojan horse, have they given you a gift or is there something inside you don't want? But you have to understand, if the property were to develop under the current standards, and that can be modeled too, you can look at that and look at what the demands are. There's no way 44 lots were gonna happen on parcel D. That's given how it's zoned, that's not going to happen because of all the drainage you have to have. You couldn't get it in there. But I think you have to understand what really could go there to really understand the benefit that you truly are getting under the new policy. Because that's what you're really, you're providing the delta over what they could achieve, because they're having to meet the new regulations and everything, and that can be determined. And the difference between the regulation requirement and, that's what they're really providing. Not 44, it's 44 minus 10, 44 minus 5, because it's what can go on the property, that's the real net gain that you're getting. And I'm not saying that that isn't a good thing, but you need to know what you're getting that you wouldn't otherwise get versus what you would get by the application of your regulations itself.
And that's exactly what I wanna know.
I agree with you.
I wanna know what that impact is, whether it's 44 units or whether it's 40 units or whether it's 35 units that they can actually build under the new guidelines, and what's the impact of that downstream, really, is what it comes down to. And, yes, Barbara.
Just, I keep thinking of questions. We know that the portion that the city is going to be in charge of, which is the Flanagan's Lane part, the weir, the water control structure, the new pump station fixing the intersection. We're doing that, and that's moving forward. And that part of it is what's gonna have the most immediate impact.
It will improve, yes, but the additional storage is pretty important, too.
And they have an emergency pump ongoing, so they're already getting the benefit of the pumping station to keep the water levels low, which is something they did not have in 2016. So, they have that. Those things are in place now, and those other... So, it's this part that the developer is potentially going to be constructing that we're talking about, really, because we're going to do the other part anyway. I mean, we know we're doing that. So, it's this component that the developer is going to be doing. So, that's looking at not beginning construction until April of 2019 at the earliest. So, it's not a six months is gonna make the difference in this year.
Well, the nine months they need for getting their plans approved. So, a delay now does delay that construction.
It's not anything for this year, and we would have this other component in place. That goes forward anyway, it's not like we're waiting for the whole thing. We're just waiting for these additional storage areas. But the pumping and so forth, we would be going forward with anyway. So, if we had to take two weeks instead of one week to understand this, it wouldn't be a six-month loss.
In fact, I was going to tell you that it has been suggested to me that proposals two and three could not be heard next week, only your column one. But I'll let the law department and planning weigh in. It has been suggested to me that would have to be on July 10th and not July 3rd if you were going to consider two or three.
Well, I would like for the, for the, all of the other folks around in the city who are interested in this to have plenty of time to understand it, so I'm glad to hear that. So, there would need to be at least two weeks to get all of this information. We couldn't hear that next week.
Well, let me make sure I understand the question. The change to the CPA could be done next week. The zoning, the change of the zoning, I guess we need to determine whether the two new alternatives are sufficiently and significantly enough related to the item that's been through planning such that it can just go directly back to you, or whether that would have to be referred back.
That might have to go back to planning.
I don't, I don't know that it's that different, but that would be the question. And I have not, I have not been here to weigh in, to think about that, and I don't know. Kay, I'll defer to you.
Unless we have to change the proffers, we would need 10 days for them to sit. And so, you have to, the change of proffers, they have to be in our hands 10 days before it's voted on. And that would be the only thing that might delay that, would be the 10 days if they had to change the proffers.
Well, if they're eliminating Village D...
They would have to change the proffers.
But if we, but given that, but if we did two, we would not be, we'd just be retaining the current plan.
Yeah, as long as the proffers didn't change, they could do that on the 3rd.
Yep, okay.
It was deferred to a date certain.
Well, you are changing the proffers for number two.
How?
Well, you're... The lot modifications.
They weren't in the original?
Okay, well, okay, no, I can't say.
No, 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 I don't wanna set a precedent of having...
The planning commission changed lots.
If they change the proffers, they have to wait until the 10th.
I'll let, just tell us in a letter, we're packing on Friday.
Do that.
That's a good idea.
That'd be great.
He gave us all of the, everything we've asked for in a nice, long letter.
I think I understand.
Do you know what they want?
I think I know what you want. But we deferred to the 3rd. So, we still gotta do an action, defer one more time, just so you know you got a leapfrog there, right? No, to the 10th. You just give yourself an extra week. I think we gotta action it.
You gotta do something.
We gotta do something on the 3rd to get to the 10th, and somewhere in between, some advertising. And we gotta look at whether or not planning actually changed the lot size when they, I think they did. I don't think we're changing anything, and when you, but we're not in a rush. So, we're just moving at your pace. If you wanna go to the 10th, check that, got it, Roger out.
Jim has a question.
So, let me just, obviously, we can't hear planning items related to two or three next week.
Well, if there's no change to the proffers, you can't.
But there are, there are.
But we think they are.
So, can we do a CPA proposal subject to planning items?
Well, you could authorize the manager to execute a specific version of the cost participation agreement, recognizing that your partner with whom you are cost participating would only execute the agreement in the event that the zoning choice you made was consistent with the version of CPA.
What I'm trying to avoid, what I'm trying to avoid is having Asheville Park on every single council agenda from now until December, because it just, it looks, it looks like that it's gonna be on next week, but we're not gonna be able to vote on it next week, so we push it to the 10th. I don't know what one week buys us, other than the legal aspect of the advertising, but...
Well, don't you, don't you have to decide which version you're gonna make and know which proffer it is before your meeting next Wednesday anyway? So, otherwise, you can't even do it on the 10th. You gotta have 10 days. Are we making a material change? I don't know that we are.
But if you make any change to the proffers, you gotta, you gotta post that change.
So, but I think you just answered my question, so deferring it on the 3rd, it would not be to the 10th, it would be to the first meeting in August, it sounds like.
As long as the proffers were in by the 1st of July.
Yeah, but we wouldn't know what proffers to put in until we got direction from the council on the cost participation side. Unless you give that direction, and you're not prepared to give that direction today, so... Because you've got questions you wanna answer.
And that's kinda why we took the time to prepare this, worked diligently. Appreciate Mr. Burdon and the Home Fed team meeting with us so expeditiously, proffering a new option for your consideration. But, and I appreciate your deferring.
Dave, is there a staff recommendation?
Yeah, if I was gonna make a recommendation, I would, I would stay with option one. I would tell you that there are proffer to give you additional, additional, the additional increase in density for Village C for D. I think D's gonna be very difficult for them long-term, I think you all recognize that. I think harvesting their 2.75 and getting them committed on that helps us with the pipage and significantly has a reduction.
So, option one is the recommendation?
Yes, sir.
All right, and option one we could vote on next week? Right? Yeah, okay. So, if we wanna get it next week, the only option is option one.
If we wanna get it in July, the only option is option one.
Okay.
Give the developer 2.1 million dollars to give it back to you, that's true. Basically, he's just giving you his lot money back, you're not, you know, he's not giving you anything.
Kay, do you want, does the council wanna consider the reduction of D? In D, that's...
Proposal three?
I think everything this proposal is, should be looked at.
Well, then, then you can't make a decision in July then, in that regard then.
That's correct.
Well, you can choose a course to pursue in July, you just can't effectuate it until the first meeting in August.
But Jim's got a good point. Every time we put it on the agenda, we drag that whole, that whole community down here thinking that there's gonna be a decision, and then it doesn't happen, and they walk away frustrated, and I think he's right, you know.
I have a suggestion, maybe?
Just, what if we, this is a thought, how to get to the cost participation agreement without...
But at the same time, making the planning decision upfront too, at the same time.
without, but at the same time, making the planning decision upfront, too, at the same time? How about this is a thought? You make a resolution for each of these that provides directions of staff for each option. You find out which option a majority of us want to vote for resolution as a direction to vote on, which is a pre-commitment to a vote. Just kind of do the advertising. And then you turn around and you vote on the cost participation agreement, which is aligned with the direction you provided the staff to bring back, because that's what you're going to vote on. You've made that decision. And therefore, you haven't put the land use decision in front of the cost participation agreement. But it's not all the legal formality, but you've given direction. And then you go and vote on a cost participation agreement that aligns with your direction. And you could do all that on the 3rd. And then the developer knows, the staff knows, we all know. And the process piece is as close as you can get without being broken. But that would work.
The way I see it, my personal opinion is, is that CPA proposal two doesn't work. And it doesn't work because of the timeframe involved in it. It's, if, if that, if we do that project, if we do it all, it's going to take us much longer to do it than.
You're talking about four?
Proposal.
Four, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I misspoke. Proposal number four. If we do proposal number four, it's going to take three years, at least, to get that project done.
Is there a consensus that we don't have to include four, then?
Yes, that's not nonstop.
So I would, I personally think we eliminate four and get it out of there. So then we're back down to either the current proposal or the other two. And, you know, again, I ask the question, if we were to do proposal three, what is the benefit from the standpoint of stormwater effect on the rest of, the rest of, what is the benefit? A stormwater benefit to the current development and the downstream development?
We're going to work those answers up and try and have it in Friday's package.
Yeah, that's what I want to know.
Resolution if frogs work, then? That would work.
Yeah.
So just to recap, Mr. Moss. You want a resolution?
Well, three, one for each option.
Okay.
And then council could decide which majority option we want, one, two, or three. We vote on that first. That's direction to staff to bring it back at that time. But that's our decision in effect. And then we can vote on the cost participation agreement.
Point of, point of understanding.
Thank you, I'm so glad you said that.
With option one, you could just approve that next week.
I know, but.
But you don't want to, you want a resolution for that one, too?
I think to keep, like, to me, there's an optic of how you're looking at this thing, that they're all equal, there's not a presumption. So if you treat them all the same as a resolution, I understand what you're saying is correct. I'm just trying to say, as you talk to the public and trying to explain, this is the one we could vote on anyway. It's just we have three choices for this body to make. We're going to make one of those choices. After we make that choice, we'll then adopt the cost participation agreement. And that's actually formally approved in it. It goes to the choice, and August 1st, or whatever that date is, we would then ratify the decision that we made.
So the resolutions would be directing you to bring back a zoning with proffers supporting whichever one?
And those questions that were asked earlier about our responsibility and what we're committing ourselves to in each case is what also we'd be looking for.
Yeah.
I wrote those down.
Everybody okay with that? Jim? Okay, okay, you've got some direction on it, then, right?
Do we vote on the 10th?
No, the vote on the planning item will be on the first meeting in August. And the item will be as directed by the resolution that's approved on the 3rd.
Correct.
If I understand it.
That you.
Exactly right. I want this off the plate.
Okay, everybody's okay, right?
Unless they pick one.
They'll vote on the planning item because they'll have to be deferred to a date certain.
The existing planning item will be deferred to the first meeting in August in any way you go. But there will be three different versions of a resolution that says that the item that we want to see will have the following proffers to support the planning form of the defined form of development.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, what's next?
I, I, I wouldn't dare try. We got a young lady sitting over here who's.
Is this smart scale? I'd love to.
You got, you got smart scale and you got planning items.
Planning's probably more important than smart scale. Because the smart scale thing, self-explanatory, if you read that, you know what it is. It doesn't take further explanation.
You know what we've submitted and why we've submitted. And we've used consultant to really give us a competitive edge in hoping that they have stayed true to their mantra at Richmond with regards to that.
And Patty's looking at you from the door over there.
The interim financial statement, you all read that. We're kind of green in most of the areas. We got watching sales tax very closely. This means.
Back on the smart scale, I do have a question. Because I know it keeps coming forward from the folks, many of the folks at Sam Ridge. Is why we don't submit the NMO 7.
Eight not to do.
A smart scale, why that doesn't qualify? It's because safety is rated so low. But I mean, that.
Yes, and if I could have Phil Pullin and Tom Leahy pay attention here. The question is, why hasn't NMO 7 been a plot, been put forward to smart scale? And Ms. Henley correctly identified is that safety is such a low percentage as opposed to congestion that you really won't fare very well.
Congestion ranks very high on that, so it's not a good candidate. We did put in NMO 7, the Stanley 4A, one of the Tiger, it's called Build Now.
Well, that's what's important, because I think there's the assumption that there's nothing happening with that road. And NMO 7A will be ready to go to construction after this year.
Yes, ma'am.
We're just waiting for the money. And so you have put in for the Tiger grant.
We've already submitted it, and we just let you know what we did.
And if we were to get some good support from all of our politicians, perhaps we could get that funding. And it would be ready to go to construction next, next budget year.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay. Just so everybody knows that there is something happening in that road. And as far as NMO 7B, you're about at 30% design.
Will have a public meeting this fall planned on it?
Public meeting, given that, and then it. And then it will go to the permitting process. But we are also have been doing work on that, so. But that wouldn't qualify for smart scale either.
No, neither one of the NMOs are congestion-related, it's a safety. We're trying to find other avenues for that, you know, the grants we can apply.
Well, just, just so everybody knows.
I'd like to bring this briefing back next week. If we're going to reduce some other things, because I agree with Mr. Moss. I think y'all need to hear this. Katie Shannon, she's our support division administrator. She works so hard to make this happen, and we, we are really the best in the business.
We want the public to hear it.
Yes, sir.
She's here, can't we just hear it?
We can hear it if you want to hear it.
I like that idea.
I'm not going anywhere, I don't have any data or anything.
We're meeting, Mr. Mayor, we're here to serve you. They want to hear it, let's hear it. I'm not going anywhere.
I got to make a phone call.
Bye, Mr. Wood.
Yes. Anybody here to hear it, but.
Long as they're sick, we're good.
You can always watch it on late night TV.
You've been waiting this whole time, so please.
Dave, I'll be right back.
That's just last snack, and I'm going on home.
Okay, well, it was going to be good afternoon, but good evening. Mayor Jones and members of council. Again, my name is Katie Shannon, and I manage the Transportation Project Support Office in Public Works Engineering. And I'm here tonight to talk to you about a transportation grant funding opportunity called Smart Scale. So what is Smart Scale? It's an acronym that stands for System Management and Allocation of Resources for Transportation. It's a VDOT program that was formerly called HB2, so you might be familiar with that name. In April of 2014, the Virginia General Assembly passed legislation that created what would become Smart Scale. It's a data-driven scoring and prioritization process to select transportation projects. It's transparent to the public, and the whole motto of it is selecting the right transportation projects and ensuring the best use of limited tax dollars. Essentially, the process is projects are screened for eligibility. They're scored based on evaluation measures, which I'll get to. And then they are prioritized based on the overall score. So we've had two previous rounds of Smart Scale, so we're currently in the third round. The process opened on March 1st, 2018, and will close on August 1st. VDOT will then release the project scores and recommended funding scenario in January of 2019. The funding is for outer year, it's FY '24 and '25. There are between $800 million and $1 billion available. And all Smart Scale projects are federalized, which means you have additional federal criteria like NEPA, environmental documentation, disadvantaged business goals, Buy America, items like that. And we're also on a biannual schedule. It used to be annual, but we've moved to every other year. So the next opportunity to apply for funding will be 2020. So this is just kind of an overview schedule. Again, the portal opened March 1st. On April 27th, Public Works had submitted a technical memorandum in the City Council Friday package that described the Smart Scale Round Three process and also identified that the four projects that we were recommending for submitting for funding. The pre-applications for those four projects were submitted on June 1st. And today is our briefing in front of council. So Smart Scale projects are scored based on six weighted evaluation measures. The weights vary depending on the geographical location of the project. Virginia Beach is in Category A, which is comprised of both Hampton Roads in the Northern Virginia area, where congestion is obviously the most significant factor. So the six evaluation measures are broken out there. We have congestion as the most significant with 45%. That's looking at hours of delay, person throughput. We have economic development at 5%, which is looking at how the project supports economic development in a three-mile radius from the site. We have accessibility at 15%, which is looking at access to jobs and multimodal choices. We have safety at 5%, which is looking at crashes, fatal injury, damage. Environmental is at 10%, which is air quality and impact to natural resources. And finally, land use at 20%, which is transportation-efficient land use for work and non-work destinations. So in order to be competitive, given that we are in Category A, all of our candidate projects have a heavy congestion component associated with them. So looking back at Rounds 1 and 2, in order to determine a funding strategy for Round 3, we took a look back at the statewide metrics of awarded projects in Rounds 1 and 2. The final Smart Scale score that every project application is given is the total factor score of all six evaluation measures that I just discussed divided by the Smart Scale funding request. So applicants can increase their final Smart Scale score by leveraging other funds. Other funds being other grants, old urban formula funds that are still around, or, in our case, local funds. Looking at the table, you've got, in Round 1, we had 321 projects that were submitted. And we, Smart Scale determined that 287 were eligible. So we screened out 34 projects. 163 projects were awarded. Of those 163 projects, 57% of the projects leveraged zero funds, meaning that the total Smart Scale request was the total project cost. However, the average total price of those projects was low, it was only $6 million. Moving up, if you look, we had 17% of projects leveraged between 1% and 25% at a higher average total project cost of $13 million. 10% was between 25% and 50% leveraged with a $20 million total project cost. 9% was between 50% and 75% with $70 million. And then finally, 7% leveraged greater than 75% of the total project cost, which were from mega projects around $100 million. As you can see from the table, the first two rounds were very similar. All of the percentages were in 2% to 3% of each other. And the higher the total project cost, the more the other funds were leveraged. So now that we've looked at the statewide, we're going to kind of look at what Virginia Beach did. So this table shows Virginia Beach's awarded projects in Rounds 1 and 2 and the amount of local funds that were leveraged. The table also includes the rankings of each of the projects. So in Round 1, you had 163 projects awarded. We received funding on three of our projects we had submitted for. And our projects ranked 95th, 124th, and 160th. So again, 163 projects were scored. Our bottom project was three from the bottom. And that project was Indian River Phase 7A, where we got $20 million of Smart Scale funding. So it's a risky business every time. Round 2 had 147 projects, and our projects ranked 50th, 57th, and 108th. So we did a little better as far as our rankings went on the second round. In total, we received $36 million of Smart Scale funding in Round 1 and $30 million in Round 2. And the average amount of prep funds that were leveraged was 56%. The second to right column shows the Smart Scale score. So the lowest project score awarded in Round 1 was 0.47. As you can see, all of our scores fell above that. But our last score of Indian River was .63, which was fairly close. The Round 2 lowest score was .87, and our projects were all above that. So we wanted to see, like, what would have happened if we had leveraged $0? So we recalculated our score if we had leveraged 0% and we had just, our Smart Scale request was the total project cost. And that is shown in the, for this right column. As you can see, the two numbers shown in red fell below the lowest score of that round. So we would not have received funding on the Laskin Road Bridge, which was $10 million, or the Indian River Road 7A project, which was $20 million. So if we had not leveraged funds, we would have lost $30 million in Smart Scale funding. So it's a, it's a risk every time. And it's difficult to discern the amount of local funds to put up because you're competing against other projects statewide, and you never know how strong those projects were going to be. So it's a gamble, and it's a risk every year. And we try to look at the metrics to see what's best. But obviously, in general, the more funds, local funds you commit, the greater the chances. So looking at what our Round 3 applications are going to be, we began this process back in January, where the members of the city's transportation committee met. And we discussed the revised evaluation measures and possible candidate projects. We did, performed a high-level survey using the defined grant metrics. And we looked at essentially the city's 2016 ranking of congested roadway segments, intersections, and crash data. Over 20 projects were considered and narrowed down to eight candidates for further analysis. Well, let me go back to, the eight candidates are shown on the right there. We had, we brought a consultant in. They did a high, very detailed dive into the metrics, the project specifics, and how everything would look. We screened them for eligibility. We did a mock score derived from the Round 3 criteria, and we prioritized the project. Four of our, the four candidate projects shown on the upper right were what fell out as our best projects, yes?
Is there, did we, did we, did we lack the capability or the capacity to do it in-house such that we had to go out and hire an outside source? Okay, that's a good answer. Thank you. Want to know which it was? Thank you very much.
Okay, so the first project that I want to talk about is Laskin Road Phase 3. So Laskin Road Phase 3 is the western terminus of the multi-phase Laskin Road corridor improvements. It is shown with the red star over there to the left. Moving east along the corridor, we have Laskin Road 1A and the Laskin Road Bridge, which are both fully funded projects through Smart Scale. And they go to construction in early 2019. Further west down the corridor, you, I'm sorry, further east down the corridor, you have 1B and 2, which are partially funded. And we're looking for opportunities to provide, to apply for grants for those. The Phase 3 section, which is the focus of our application, is the western terminus. So you've got the Whole Foods in the upper right corner, near Republic Road, going down to just past Philip Avenue, where you have the East Coast Appliance in the bottom left corner.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
When those things are partially funded, when you are looking at the additional benefit if those things were completed, do you go back and assess whether or not that partial funding merits revisiting projects in the CIP? That if you move that money to there, the benefit is higher here than the project that previously was funded?
Well, most of the partial funding on those projects has been spent. Originally, Laskin Road was Phase 1, and we did, a lot of the original design components and project funding was spent. We have some seed money left on them for some preliminary engineering. And we like to kind of bring it out every so often and kind of bring up the design standards so we can get it ready for other grant submissions. And we are looking at other grant opportunities for 1B and 2. But there isn't a lot of money in there that would help another project in the CIP.
No, 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 that's, that's not the question.
I'm sorry.
The question I was asking is, given where you are, taking money from a project that has it to fill in the difference, to complete the construction of the whole network? And is that added value benefit greater than the benefit where the money is in a road project, such that you would revisit your, how you distribute your money? distribute your money in the road CIP? Don't answer that today, because it takes some work.
Yeah.
I'm just curious about it.
And the ballots to complete on those projects are quite significant. I think 1B is about $20 million, and 2 is about 20, so it's fairly significant. But we will look at that. So talking about Laskin Road Phase Three, this section of Laskin Road operates at a level of service of E, which is not great. A is the best, and F is the worst, kind of the grading scale for schools. This project will remove the feeder roads east of Regency Hilltop and will widen the roads from four to six lanes. The removal of the feeder roads allows for limited right-of-way acquisition and also preserves right-of-way to give the city the opportunity in the future to expand to eight lanes if the need arises. Historically, Laskin Road has scored really well on SmartScale. We have two other phases funded through it, and the approved NEPA speaks to project readiness, which looks really good on the SmartScale process. The total project cost of this project is estimated at $31.5 million. Next, you have the First Colonial Road project, which will widen First Colonial Road from four lanes to six lanes, from Laurel Lane, Republic Road, which is shown all the way to the left at the Hilltop Shopping Center, to Old Donation Parkway, which is shown all the way to the right of the screen, near Centerra Virginia Beach General Hospital. The First Colonial Road currently operates at a level of service of F as well and is ranked number 37th in congested roadway segments for the city. It's a critical medical corridor with the hospital there, which contributes to congestion because you have a lot of preemptions of emergency vehicles along the corridor. This project would complete widening of First Colonial Road from Virginia Beach Boulevard all the way to Old Donation Parkway, because we have two adjacent projects that are fully funded, Laskin Road Phase 1A and also the First Colonial Virginia Beach Boulevard project, which are both going to construction within the next year. The total project cost on this project is estimated at $52 million. Our third project is General Booth Boulevard, which will widen General Booth from four lanes to six, from Nemo Parkway to London Bridge Road. The Strawbridge Marketplace is along the corridor, and Red Mill Shopping Center is directly adjacent. This section of General Booth also operates at a level of service F, so heavily congested, and is ranked number 10th of congested roadway segments within the city. It's a short section of roadway. It's only just over a third of a mile. However, given the amount of traffic that's going on and off of Nemo and London Bridge, we feel like improving this section will actually have a huge improvement on the congestion along the corridor.
What is the big cost driver for four tenths of a mile for $20 million bucks? Is it acquisition? Is it acquisition the big driver?
The.
Ms. Henley has.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So it's going to be four lanes on each end of it, and then just for this small section?
It's going to be six lanes. That's going to work in turn lanes and so forth, so it's not a great problem?
Exactly. There won't, because so much traffic is turning onto London Bridge and Nemo Parkway, we'll be able to handle it with turn lanes. It won't cause, like, trap lanes or a bottleneck downstream on either direction.
I know a couple of months ago, we had a question about a possible sound wall in there with that neighborhood that's right in there. With this being a new project, will that trigger the ability to look at that?
Because SmartScale does have federal funding associated with it, that involves a NEPA environmental documentation, and with that becomes a noise analysis. So with that $20 million, we have included costs for what would be likely sound walls along the corridor. So that $20 million does include that.
That's the other cost driver you did.
It is a big cost driver. Yes.
That's probably the biggest cost driver.
Exactly, and we're trying to get smarter with this by having accurate cost estimates when we submit these. This project has a strong economic development component, given the Hickman project, property that is being developed right now, and also the redevelopment at the corner of General Booth Boulevard and London Bridge Road. The total project cost again is $20 million. Our fourth and final project is improvements to the intersection of General Booth Boulevard and Oceana. There are 82,000 vehicles per day that travel through this intersection at a level of service of F. The adjacent corridors, General Booth and Oceana, are not overly congested. The intersection is the bottleneck. So the point of this project is to move people through that intersection. We modeled several innovative intersection designs, which is kind of the new thing in transportation right now, and ironically, it came back that the best solution for this intersection was a combination of two conventional improvements. So what we came up with was adding a third through lane, southbound, so away from the oceanfront on General Booth. And then for Oceana, we're going to remove the existing free-flow right turn onto General Booth and instead convert the existing lanes into dual right-turn lanes that are controlled by the signal. And we feel like with those improvements and changes to the phasing of the signal, we'll actually be able to move a lot of cars through that intersection. So much.
By chance, remember what the increased volume from that is?
From, the increased volume from?
Said you can move the intersection, you're able to move more traffic. Are you?
Well, we're just trying to move the existing vehicles through it more efficiently.
What's the cycle time improvement?
I don't have that information. I'd have to get to it, but I can say that we would, this, the way the intersection works right now, it's a level of service of F, and the modeling is showing that we would improve the entire intersection to a level of service of C with some legs operating at an A or a B.
That's new.
So it would be, and the total project cost is only $4.1 million, which I understand is a good amount of money, but as far as transportation projects go, it's very cost-effective for what we would, the bank.
I would put that on the slide.
Put that at the top.
Put that on the slide.
And no sound walls on this one, true. So the total project cost again is $4.1 million. So this table right here shows the local funds commitment that we are recommending for SmartScale Round Three. Essentially, we're recommending 10% to 20% of a local funds commitment. Looking back at the metrics for the first two rounds, about 75% of the awarded projects leveraged between 0% and 25% of funds. So we're trying to be, we're taking additional risks here. Again, the funds are outer year. It's FY '24 and '25. The lower local funds commitment is risky, but we do believe our projects are strong candidates that can compete at a statewide level. We do risk, however, of not receiving SmartScale funding this round or receiving a limited amount. If all four projects were awarded, the city would be committing $16 million, which is 15% of the total project cost, but what we would stand to benefit would be $92 million in SmartScale funds, so, if successful. So it's a, it's a risk, but it has a big payoff if we're successful. So again, there's no formal action required today. We just wanted to brief council on the progress with our SmartScale process. We will be coming back on July 10th with an agenda item for resolution of support. The SmartScale project application process requires that, so we can't submit without it. And again, just the schedule slide from the beginning, we just finished our briefing today on June 26, and we have our resolution of support, and then applications are submitted August 1st, and we'll have results in January.
Any discussion?
Just one point. You may ask your consultant, or maybe a good research student or mathematics student who owes you, define game theory to your score for experience, to see if you couldn't improve how you do your allocation based on the inherent patterns that you can find.
Very true.
That would be a very interesting to work.
Yeah, and you know, the further rounds we have, the more information we have. So I'm interested to see what happens next round with the smaller local commitment.
Guarantee you.
Good research.
We're the only people that are doing this level of fidelity right now. Pretty intense.
Great. All right, we're all here, let's hear the planning items.
All right. Jimmy and Carolyn?
All this time to come up?
Jump on. Thanks, fellas. Thanks for staying late. Katie, great briefing. Thank you. Brian, Tara, thank you.
No party tonight?
I won't take it personal. Sorry. Well, good evening. We really will fly through this, and we'll give you a very abbreviated summary of the July planning items. We have three scheduled for you on July 3rd. You are familiar, very familiar with all of them. The first one is the Sports Center at the oceanfront, and the proposed 285,000-square-foot building is outside of the build-to zone, which is required in the Form Based Code. We define that build-to zone as between 5 and 35 feet of the right-of-way. So because that building is outside of it, they do need the special exception for alternative compliance. There was one speaker in support at the May Planning Commission meeting. He did have some concerns related to stormwater, and he requested that extensive plant material be added along 17th Street, and he also had some comments related to his disappointment with the proposed architecture, particularly along that 17th Street facade. Staff did note to the Planning Commission that the city's design consultants have been exploring some different scenarios to provide some significant screening of the mechanical equipment and also to upgrade those elevations. And those exact details will be included in the site plans, the middle, that we do expect later on this summer. Short-term rental, I think the city attorney's office has given us our path forward with that one, and then, as you also heard this afternoon, staff is continuing to work with the applicant and resolve those issues raised on the 19th. So now we are moving on to Jimmy.
Tough act to follow there, Jimmy.
I know.
Can you do it, Jimmy?
As we were divvying on that, she had three and I had seven. So, seven items for July the 10th, and item number six has requested withdrawal, so we will not be seeing that one. Actually, we will be seeing that one as it's been advertised, as we'll get to it. All right, item number one is a tattoo parlor along Virginia Beach Boulevard. It's B2, is in the Francis Land House Historic and Cultural District, and as such, the Historic Review Board issued a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed sign above the entry. It's about 3,000 square feet, contained about nine working spaces for tattoo artists and art gallery, and no changes besides the signage is proposed. No opposition is known at this time. Item number two, again, is a tattoo parlor. This one is for microblading, as we know as permanent makeup. They are proposing to operate within an existing beauty salon that is located along Lynnhaven Parkway. No changes except for the sign above the entryway, and there is no opposition. Next is a use permit for a residential kennel, which is on property located on Blackwater, for up to 15 dogs, 12 of which will be hunting dogs, and three companion dogs. Applicant was unaware of the need for a condition use permit until they were told by a friend, so they are here for us. Staff has received no complaints from the surrounding property owners, only letters of support.
There's no one around it.
Yep, exactly. So there are three existing kennels located in the rear yard. They are requesting a deviation to 100-foot setback requirement, but as you can see, there's not a lot of folks around, so staff and planning commission are both supportive of this request, and we are unaware of any opposition. Next is a use permit for a group home on the site for the housing of individuals who have intellectual disabilities. There was an existing one, excuse me, on the site. They are now requesting to change the type of people housed on the site. Instead, they are now going to house up to 13 for individuals who would be otherwise homeless. Occupants will pay a nominal fee to stay in the home for up to two years. Volunteers from the church and the community will manage the day-to-day operations, and again, we are unaware of any opposition to this request. This is a conditional rezoning of 10 and 1/2 acres of agriculturally zoned property. To condition Arten to create 10 single-family lots. With the exception of Lot 1, which has 14,500 square feet, all the lots along Tre Song Trail have 15,000 square feet to match the lots on the western side of the road. The property is located near Nemo Parkway and is located in Southern Rivers Watershed, and as such, they have submitted preliminary stormwater analysis. We have, after review, we have confidence that they will be able to meet the requirements to address and capture the treatment of stormwater runoff. The existing dwellings on the property will remain, and Lot 10, the existing dwelling on the property will remain on Lot 10, which is the largest, and will have 7 and 1/2 acres, and we are unaware of any opposition at this time. As we said previously, item number six has requested a deferral, but as this, it's not a deferral, a withdrawal, but as this item has been advertised already, you will have to take action to approve that withdrawal. Last, item number seven is a modification of conditions. This is for St. Luke Church along Salem Road to modify their use permit to allow a 7,500 square-foot addition and additional 35 parking spaces. Again, this is in Southern Rivers Watershed, and they have submitted preliminary stormwater analysis, and the DSC has reviewed it, and we feel that has the potential to comply with our regulations. There are two temporary structures on the property that will be removed, as the addition will accommodate these church programs that were temporarily housed in these trailers. The addition does mimic the existing building materials and architectural style of the building, and again, we are unaware of any opposition. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Are we through, Mr. City Manager?
I apologize. I didn't realize it'd take this long, but all the topics.
We had some good discussion tonight. We got some things done.
We got it done.
Thank you for your patience.
I'm already capable, guy. Meetings adjourned.